Four of us to start. So I guess we'll just start off with library, I think. Because first of all, there are two of them.
Do you usually stand up?
You can right there.
You can just do the microphone thing.
How about you go ahead?
I am pretty short, so I can see how that could happen.
You want my chair?
That's all right. All right, so I sent out the October report. It's got all of our statistics and everything. If you have any questions about that, just let me know. Database use has the plus by it because I'm still working on getting login information to actually access all of our statistics. So that's a work in progress. But we've got a good number of checkouts and renewals. And being part of a cooperative network allows us to have access to a lot more materials. And people are making use of that, so that's really nice to see. And then we have some pretty strong programming numbers. People coming to use the library for early learning programs, for some teen programs, and even some adult programs. And then the meeting room is also getting a lot of use by the community. So, do you have the PowerPoint? Did you not get the PowerPoint?
I didn't get PowerPoint.
I have the PowerPoint, okay. It's a very short PowerPoint.
Oh, good. So you're enjoying your job?
I am so far, yes.
So far?
You never know, but I am enjoying learning everything that the library is doing. Getting to know my staff and the community, I was there coming in and everything. In fact, today's been a great day because we've been seeing everybody come in to vote or ask questions about the ballots.
The parking lot was packed when I came by at about 5:30 or so.
That was amazing.
Yeah, that's been really nice.
All right, so what's up?
Sarah.
Lisa.
Thank you. All right, so just a few highlights from things that happened in October. We had our annual Halloween program. It was family mini golf. We actually used the 3D printer to print out those heads for the golf clubs and the holes. So I thought that was a nice use of our 3D printer. And then these are just some pictures from the program. We had 94 kids come through, and including their parents, that's about 150 or 175 people come through the library that evening to be involved in this event. And people had a blast. We also worked with the maintenance department to offer a teen adulting 101 auto shop class. That was a two-part series. And we actually had about 19 teens total between the two programs, which is really good for a teen program at about 7:00 at night. So. Other news, as you all know, Pam retired this past month, and I started. One of the benches in the reading garden was dedicated to Pamela. I don't know if you know that, but if you go and look, there's a little plaque on there now. We had the first annual Liberty Lake Reads event. The culminating event was a book group discussion of the book. And there were about nine people at that event. And then I've just been working with the library board, starting to take a look at doing some community assessments so that we can focus our services and begin strategic planning. I've got it here. So we can begin our strategic planning project, which should dovetail in nicely with the city's strategic plan, since one of the portions of that really applies to the library quite a bit. And so that's one reason why we've been talking about that assessment project. This would be a big part of that. And then, coming up, we've got a Veterans Day program. This Friday from 6:00 to 7:00, there's going to be a panel of veterans talking to people who come, who ask questions. We're doing a number of Thanksgiving and Fall Craft programs. We have a kids keyboard series, so some STEM programming going on. And then STEM LED Christmas trees, so people can learn a little bit of soldering and using LED lights to create. They're actually pretty cool looking. We're having a finances for college and work-bound teens with STCU. And then, in case you didn't know, the Saturday with Santa has been scheduled. That is December 15th, from 10:30 to 1:30 in the library. And that is all that I have for this month. If there's other information you'd like me to include in these reports, please just let me know, and I'd be happy to do so. Yes?
Do you have some idea, a testament on the assessment? Do you think you might be in a position to move ahead with that?
Once we knew sort of that the funding was there, then we'd be able to call and do some requests for proposals with different outside vendors to come in and give an impartial view of what the community's needs are now and in the future, and help us begin our strategic planning process. So I think we'd be able to, however you put it, turn around depending upon the vendor availability.
The other thing, I was in the library earlier today, said hi, and the LED Christmas tree is really cool. That is really cool.
I have a question on the 3D printer. I think, we have one over there, correct?
Yes.
You know, I think it gets a lot of use. And so I'd like you guys at least to address maybe getting another one, or a bigger one. I think that's probably one of the future things for kids, from a STEM learning opportunity.
Okay.
Just coming again from a, hey, that's part of the, when you're assessing, but I think that STEM 3D type stuff is really cutting out for kids.
And if you're looking for anybody to do like a class in learning how to do a 3D printing, I know my son Kyle, freshman year at CB, he did engineering 101, and they learned that. So, you know, maybe it can hurt to reach out to the teacher over at CB, see if he'd be willing to do a class.
Okay, that's a great connection, thank you.
I think it's a good idea, looking into maybe a larger one, because it was, a month or two ago, I saw, just a tail end of a TV program, and they were talking, they had, a lot of these items were made by that, and they actually turned it into an art project. And it was pieces of it. There were, when it was all put together, was this art that, this town or, I don't know if it was town or city or a school, someone did that. Of course, you know, mine goes with art. How that might be a creative idea to get some of the kids involved, to come up with something, and it'd be nice if something, a larger one to do, a larger art.
Construction, I mean, they're doing 3D buildings, cement, so you could even look and get something like that for...
We could add a community center.
You're sticking out of the box.
The library, you move over.
First world library.
Well, let's throw that out, we have enough.
Not really, we only have three. All right.
All right, well, thank you for the wonderful feedback on things that we should look into.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief, I think you're up next, because...
Yep.
Right, the evening Mayor, members of the council, the election night. Funny to watch those results come in. So you have a written report in front of you for the crime statistics and some of the highlights from October. The, so I'll let you look at those. You know, one of the things we look at trending is our total number of calls for service, so that 418 numbers, you know, back down to about our normal number of calls we respond to every single month, which is down from our big month we had in July of 712 calls. So glad to see that number be consistent and not trending upwards. So not on your report, just some things I wanted to highlight is, we have a youth leadership conference that is sponsored by the local Rotary Club, where we had about 400 FDLA high school students from around the region attend that conference. I was able to put on a short breakout session called "In Line to Fire: Leadership," talking about law enforcement. Very well attended, up to 400 and something kids over there, I think we had about 250 attend that session. Something that we do every year, but again, another great community outreach program that we're involved in. Our hiring update, we had a total of, I think it was 46 applications came in, which we were glad to see. Usually we'd like to have almost 100 for two positions, but we were happy with 46. The deadline for the applications were October 19th. The 46 was a total of the entry level and lateral officer applications, majority of those being the entry level officers. Last Sunday, we conducted testing, entry level testing for had written tests, and those that passed that went on to a physical agility test. And those that passed that were then ranked based on their scores. So of all those, we had 16 pass both those portions of the test. So now we have a entry level list ranked 1 through 16. Coming up on November 19th and 20th, we will have our lateral officer oral board interviews. We have 12 lateral officers that have applied for the position. Our lateral board will be made up of our two sergeants, one of our patrol officers, a sergeant from Cheney Police Department, and then we're getting either the manager or assistant manager from YOCS to be the community representative on that board. So after fighting for the month, we'll have them ranked, and then we'll move forward to make a determination as to who moves on to the kind of final round of both those categories. And eventually with the final interview with the mayor, and then a hiring decision will be made in early January.
Brian, what does it cost to, the whole process, to hire, train, and equip a police officer in Liberty Lake?
So, you know, obviously the main, the biggest cost of that is obviously the person salary, because even while they're going to the police academy or their training, they are, you know, fully paid by the city.
Yes.
So that's the biggest cost. The uniform cost for each officer is about $5,000 initially to equip them. And that includes the vests, bulletproof vests, their weapons, firearms, Taser, duty belts, and two sets of uniforms. So that total costs you about $5,000. The actual cost of like a tuition, if you would, to send them to a police academy is minimal. It's about $1,000 is what it would cost our agency to send them. Because we're a small agency, we're under a certain threshold where it's funded through the state, as opposed to larger agencies, officers that are hired by them, they have to pay the full cost of the police academy and their room and board, where that is not applied to small agencies.
What's your other duty, though? What does it cost for, you know, the vehicle and firearms and...
So we figure so, about 100 and, between 130 and 150,000 dollars a year per officer.
Okay. Good. Very good, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Let's see, two other things to mention. One is you're probably aware, sent an email, or you probably saw the flash and the lights, it looked like Christmas in November last night. So about 3:30, there was a gas line rupture. So a contractor on Country Vista bored through a six, I think it was a six-inch natural gas line, that's a big line. The line was punctured at the 21,900 block of Country Vista, which is right by Lacy Villas Apartments, right across the street from Home Depot. It was on the south side of the street, so on the apartment side of the street. Because of the major gas leak that occurred, that it's actually a fire response as a hazardous materials issue, we were there to help support that. We closed down Country Vista from Stamford Lane to just past Home Depot. Took a lot longer than we thought, so we had that entire road closed from about 3:30 till 8 o'clock last night. They were, two businesses had to be closed, so Popular Companions and Fujauma had to close. And then we evacuated several units at the Lacy Villas. 16 of those residents were not able to get back into their apartment till today, waiting for the natural gas to expire out of the area. So anyways, huge event. Good news is, nothing seriously bad happened. Would not have taken much with that large of a gas line to ignite that with a spark or cigarette or anything. There was a person that was watching outside of a business complex there smoking a cigarette and had to be told to use extinguisher scissors. Anyways.
Is his nickname Pyro?
I don't know. The, we received numerous calls though, because the smell from the natural gas, you could smoke from the freeway on, over the River District area, windows blowing in that direction. So we received numerous calls about people not knowing about the gas leak, thinking there was something else going on. So we had to respond to that as well. But anyway, good outcome, great partnership with the fire department coordinating, making sure that the situation was resolved and safe.
Was the incident caused by a city contractor?
It was a, it was not a city contractor. My understanding is it was one of the contractors that was doing the boring for their video cable or fiber.
So do they ever have to reimburse the city and the fire department for expenses?
So not that I know of, you know, unless, I guess there's something in their franchise agreement or something that would address them, because you're giving them permission to do that, right?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, in this case, what happened is, the Vista didn't locate the gas line, they didn't know it was there. So since they didn't locate it, the contractor's not responsible. And so Vista ended up paying mobile.
I guess you'll see.
Have they not seen the billboards, the safe call?
No, they called for low key, but it just wasn't on Vista's plans, so they came out and did all the locates for the...
Oh, so Vista didn't realize it was there?
They just didn't, just didn't know they knew it was there.
It'd still be interesting to see if there is some liability there that we have, the city has to extend employees, Stephen goes out or whatever the case may be, even his employees, that, is there some way we can get reimbursement for that?
I think we possibly, we probably could, yes.
Yeah, same for the fire department.
I don't know that we have a lot of, well, you had your time, I don't know which time you had into it.
It's good to know. So we can check.
I saw Ray in the street, and he didn't realize how many fire trucks you guys had. There were a lot of them.
I think there were seven, I think there were seven fire apparatus.
Yeah, so, and it was a great response and great, you know, I saw that everybody was working the traffic and so forth. In fact, I stopped at Puncle Bank and talked to the manager there and suggested they take his car out there, as the cars went by, it could prompt some business, because they were always on our front door. But really, they, the community had a very good understanding of what you guys can do and do, and have a great appreciation of it, so he was very happy. So thank you.
And the feedback on social media, because there was a lot of Spokane news, people were just thrilled that it was, it was really only about, not even a five-minute delay for most people doing the detours, and they were really happy with how it was handled.
Yeah, I mean, we were lucky that we had that route available to send through the Home Depot parking lot, sort of. And the last thing I have is, there's an article in Spokesman Review about Liberty Lake being one of the safest cities in Washington State. So there's about 288 municipalities in Washington State, and Liberty Lake was ranked number nine. So oftentimes, the question is asked as well, who's ahead of us? I saw, I'll pull that up really quick, in case you're interested. So number one was Snow Creek. Number two is Mercer Island. Three was Semamish. Four was Newcastle. Five was Linden. Six was Canis. Seven was Seagull Valley. Eight, Lake Forest Park. Nine, Liberty Lake. Ten, Mill Creek.
I got, but only one is for Washington, too.
Yeah, West Richland, yeah. West Richland has the number 12. So those are, West Richland, they're number 12. And so in the top 20, West Richland and Liberty Lake are the only ones in Houston.
Same, right, because most of those are relatively small cities.
Yeah.
Between, usually you have about 15,000 to 25,000 people.
Mercer has benefits because you can't get on.
Yeah. Also in your packet, we have it on the board, too, if you want to scroll down, push a little bit, is the map, it just shows our, so we have, you have that. Does that answer any questions you might have?
Yeah, Chief, I was looking at the numbers like you're talking, and for the month, there's a total of 418, so I got to look at how many there were written up either collision or DUI or what have you, there's 125. So we have about 300 that don't fall in that category. What I find interesting about this, and good, is that I'll hear individuals at times complaining that, you know, crime is rampant in Liberty Lake, a lot of times it's something down on the lake or something like that, we get into that. Quite honestly, I look at these numbers, 125 that fall into the category of traffic collisions, collision, citation, DUI, this type of stuff, that's 1/10 to 1% of our population. So I have to believe that was somebody who corrected me. We're pretty good here. I think we got a lot to be proud of.
Yeah, I'd say we're about the ninth safest city in the country.
I wish I had a higher question.
I know, me too.
I thought that was great.
Chief, I know there's only six traffic collisions and stuff on here, so it's kind of hard to identify pattern, but over the last two months, what would you say, based on those numbers, are our most dangerous intersections? I'm assuming signal might be one.
So signal's usually on the top ones. Yeah, signal on that play.
And we'll save the question for the traffic light update for the senior mayor. Thanks.
We'll get fired.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tim O'Brien spoke in about a very burning. So I should have in front of you the monthly report for October for Spokane Valley Fire Department's response in Liberty Lake area. So there's a total of 104 emergency calls per service from October 1 to October 31. 79 of those were emergency medical calls, which is pretty much right in the average with what we, our service delivery model, we run usually 82% of our calls are in medicals. So that's a very average number. And then you can see that the rest of it made up, motor vehicle blocks, minutes four, five, or six, building alarms, five, hazardous materials, one, service calls, two. A lot of times, we'll get dispatch canceled en route for various reasons, there's seven of those. Some of the more significant ones, on October 4th, they had a structured fire at 18800 Block, East Martin, it turned out to be a garage fire that was fully involved. We were able to make a pretty quick knockdown on it and keep the fire out of the house. So the damage was confined to the garage. The investigators found out that, just prior to the fire, that somebody had been in the garage smoking, most likely just infamiously disposed of their cigarette. So accidental in nature, but nonetheless, pretty devastating. Had a brush layer call on October 11th, it just turned out to be a construction company had dug some holes and was burning some materials. There were a couple of problems with that, is one, the burn ban was still, that was the last day of the burn ban, they missed it by a day. But, yeah, so we extinguished the fire and then advised them that the burn ban was still in effect, and that in fact, October 12th, we lived it. But you still can't burn garbage and trash and things like that, that's never permitted. Typically, your burn bans are just for outdoor campfire, backyard fire, you know, those type of things, warming cooking fires. So, so we extinguished that, no harm, they were in 10 by 10 holes, so they weren't going anywhere. So we had that going for us. For sure, the most significant incident of the month was on October 18th, we had a reported pedestrian hit and run at 24800 East Mission, New York, Country Vista. So we had a 61-year-old DML that was unconscious when we got there. Was receiving care from bystanders, and so when we got there, we rendered aid and transferred to the hospital. Our paramedic rode in with...
Ambulance leave.
With, yeah, in the ambulance, which we often do, to stay with the patient, continue care all the way to the hospital. And, and she was in critical condition at the time, and then some short time later passed away. Pretty tragic. October 22nd, we get a commercial structural fire alarm, it turned out to be really nothing more than food and rice. So that happens more often than people think. You can usually tell when you show up and smell it, all of her food kind of smells the same, so. Which is basically, those are easy ones. We just remove the food off the stove, wait for it to cool down, and then we usually stick around and, as we did in this case, we'll ventilate the structure, we'll pull out fans and help air it out as quickly as possible. Get that smell out so it doesn't permeate into everything in the house, don't let that have a winter time. You don't want to have your windows open any longer than you need to, so we can just get that bad air out, close it up and keep it warm. And like I said, the burn ban was lifted on October 12th, so we're back to having campfires and backyard fire pits with approved fuels.
You were, you were testing the, I guess the rescue, I don't have a better term, the rescue vehicles, where you just have the smaller cars for your medical.
Oh, yeah.
And how's that going? Are you going to expand that?
Yeah, so we, we did a pilot program last April, where we did a six-month program, and that was during, the readout shows April, September was what that is statistically, our peak activity time of the year, those are the busiest months. So we ran the pilot program first half of our shift from 8:00 until 8:00 in the evening. And that's also pretty much peak activity time for call-in, kind of drops off at 100% at the end of this. But that's, we wanted to try and see if we could put a unit in place that was considerably more cost efficient to operate, and take some of the pressure off one of our busiest engines, which happened to be Engine 7 down on Evergreen. And, and they run the lower acuity calls. And that made the engine more available for the heart attacks, the strokes, the more significant calls. So it worked out really well. In fact, it worked out so well, we just brought it back a couple months ago, full time.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're running one unit now.
But do you, do you have a capital plan to take on four of those, or six of those?
I, I don't know if we'll get to four or six, but it's likely you'll see another one, a second one. But right now, one is there in the plan. Station A, which sits right at Pines, next to our Allen Building, that is the busiest station in the department, not the busiest company, they have two companies there. But as you saw with the gas fire, one fire engine is, doesn't put out fire and respond to emergencies, it's a multi-company response. So when these engines are tied up on medicals, especially if they're very low-acuity medicals, they're not available to respond to your gas leak or your house fire. So these, these alternate, alternative response units, or aid cars, or you know, whatever you want to call them, they're very helpful to keep these engines available for the other types of calls.
How's the, how's it tie in with the fire department and like our angel, Harrison, guardian angel?
You mean how?
They have a significant number of calls, I think, for service from the fire department. And so the question is, is how's it tying with the fire district to these guys to kind of minimize those calls, or to prep them better, or call the ambulance first, or, I'm not sure, I just...
Yeah, so we work pretty closely with the care facilities throughout the community, and they usually have a paid staff, that includes nurses. They're not always trained in emergency care.
Right.
So they call us, and we come. And we go through the same process regardless of whether it's your home or it's a care facility with patient care. But sometimes, some of the care facilities will start calling you for things like, can you pick them up, put them, help them back into bed? And really, that's what their staff is for. So we kind of monitor that to make sure it's not abused, our services aren't abused.
Yeah, no, I don't see them trying to abuse your service, I just, I know that that's, Chief, I mean, you're right across the street, so.
Yeah.
It's a call a day, it almost.
Yeah, that is one of the great things about the fire service, we don't care who you call, they'll come and help.
Just put your little, your next aid card there.
That's exactly right. There's some truth to that, right? And they pick up a lot of those kind of calls. And, and that's common, whatever community you live in, those care facilities generate a lot of call-in. Yeah.
Anything else?
You have a pin map, basically, that shows you where the calls were located. I think it's pretty good. I like the station location, the new station location appears to be working out pretty well.
Yeah, it's been great. And then, I got to, Chief Collins, you know, has made a great part of the scene, and your board, you know, the most time we have Patrick or someone here, the board over the last 15 years have been a great group to work with, John, us, through the time.
I would agree.
You got it.
I have a question. I see you have two service calls. Type of calls being?
They could be, I don't know how, yeah, sometimes you get... Sometimes you get, should I come up with an example of one? Sometimes people call and say something minor with their house or their microwave broke in or anything. We get all kinds of stuff that wouldn't fall into a fire or a motor vehicle incident, a medical emergency, things like that. Just like, hey, can you check an electrical outlet? Won't it, I think it smells.
I'll give you a good example. My wife and I called one night because we had a, is it on now?
Yeah.
We had a noise in our attic. We couldn't figure out what it was. And so we asked, we called and they came. We said, it's not an emergency, we just don't understand what's going on. And they came out and they finally determined that we had a malfunctioning radon fan in the attic that was screeching and making all kinds of noise. So that was a non-emergency call, a service call. Really appreciated that they were able to identify what the problem was. Because my wife wasn't letting me get any sleep.
You're actually very wise to call, because you never know that sometimes things like that turn into a fire in your attic.
Yes.
And you're one of the last to know. Your neighbors will knock on your door and tell you, hey, your attic's on fire. Or it happens in the middle of the night. But a lot of times these service calls too, that sometimes they'll show up at somebody's house. And while you're there checking out their electrical outlet or their microwave, they'll say, well, while you're here, can you take a look? And they got a list, you know. Can we change light bulbs? We do all that stuff all the time.
Oh, wait. I haven't used that service. What, can we change light bulbs?
Yeah.
Got really big ladders.
Do you guys still provide the service or come out and check the smoke alarms and stuff?
Correct.
And how would that come into your calls? Would that be listed?
No, that wouldn't.
That's just a service?
Yeah, that's a service we provide for.
I think it's a great service.
It is a great service.
That's outstanding.
Yeah, we'll do the installs on the stuff to check for you.
Do the installs?
Yep.
And both at the same time?
Well, you got a slice of both, but we'll put them in for you.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great program.
Yeah, it is.
Lisa?
Scott, can you go first?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you handle that? Okay, so I'm going to give you an update on what our active projects are right now. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And so start with that. So we'll start with the Trailhead pump project. And it's just kind of representational of what it looks like. But basically, the plans are ready, they're ready to advertise. And one of the key factors in deciding to advertise here right away is that there's about a one-week lead time, so five months. So if we wait until council approval in the end of December to advertise, that, you know, that person may know June, July season trying to install pumps on your Asian system, which is probably a really bad idea. So our intention here is to advertise it. If we're not to bid, open bids on November 20th and then figure out, you know, go through our process and figure out who the low bidder is. And then send them a letter of notice that we intend to award contingent on council approval. So it'd be contingent when we actually award the contract. And we're also making that clear in the bid documents too, so everybody knows, say, here's the deal. So then we'll see if, depending on if we also give both projects and we would proceed with approval on issuing the formal word and a contract on the 20th, after the 20th.
Any questions about that process? Yeah.
Estimate the cost of what?
I believe it's in the $300,000 range.
Thank you.
Of course, you know, probably hard to be able to answer. We had an estimate of about 1.3 million for the irrigation system. And I believe that included the pump.
Do you not believe in the, we put the budget through for that one and did not include the pump? The pump was in part of the scope in there, but it was not an item identified in 1.3.
The bid came in like 1 million, so we're 300,000 less, which is good. So that is 300,000 is addition to, that's okay. So I was just saying, thank you.
And I think, correct me, but the pump we put in over the golf course with the county was about 200,000 bucks?
I think it was 150.
And wasn't our share 100 on that? Maybe they.
Yeah, 100 and 150.
Well, that was for our, because they knew the pump, wasn't it? Right?
Didn't we share 100,000 on that cost?
Well, we were to buy our own pump, I think. So what we shared in their ability to get everything, their package. But I think our grand cost was the cost of the pump and installation, basically, I thought was.
I can go ahead and get the exact numbers on what that pump project was that the county performed. I'll get the exact numbers on that for the pump.
Whatever it was, the thing I remember most about it is that we had roughly 16 years of free water leading up to that. So if the cost is 100,000, we got to bargain. Thank you.
Okay. Next thing to talk about here is the signals at Appleway and Signal Road. And I call it signals and signal. And basically, the basic infrastructure is complete right now. You've probably seen the traffic control the last couple of weeks, but the basic infrastructure is complete. We suspended the contract on for a cold trouble. We're looking for delivery on the poles end of November and then installation of the signal itself end of November, first part of December. So it looks like we'll get, basically, we'll have up and on in this year. There are some really, really bad weather, but in that, I don't think we're going to affect it. So the only thing we'd have to do is do a little bit of spring landscape work. So that's that project. The signals at Appleway and Madison, we submit for a T I B, Transportation Improvement Board grant, which we're expecting an answer here by the end of the month. I did talk to the T I B a couple of days ago and I'm getting a pretty good feel that we're going to be successful in it. So I think that's good. Did I point you?
Should point.
Do I get to deal with that grant, the dollar amount?
There you go. Okay, the Higgs overlay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Kennedy had a question.
Do I get to deal with that grant? How much it will be?
I think it's five, actually not, I'm sorry.
Five or something like that. That's close to, very close to what the.
I think it's 585.
That's pretty close to what the length is.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, we did have one matching portion with it. It was 100 and, it's sort of a small 100.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, next project is the Higgs overlay, which is complete. We're in the process of doing administrative closeout and that's really all that's left. We've got a final three young quantities, so we will not be using our contingency. There doesn't look like there'll be any claims on the project. So I think that's good. I think in general, the neighborhood has been real receptive to the job and having it done, so. Orchard Park, we took delivery of some water features here this week. And Brian was kind enough to let us store him in the police station yard. We didn't want to have him out over the winter and just sit on a pallet. So we thought that would be the best thing to do to keep vandalism down. So he really should drive by there and look at it. They're hilarious, so. Not what I expected. So and we were going to regale you with one of Dennis's aerial photos, but it was, again, I don't think he's ready to drive my airplane yet, so. So we took a couple stills. So what you can see here is that most of this splash pad on the, beyond the north end is pretty well done. The concrete's pretty well done. They finished up the soils on the east side. Those are ready to take the water from the splash pad. They're working on the playground on the right side there, that's in process. They're putting topsoil on trees and the landscaper told me, and Jennifer knows way more about the landscape than I do, but that basically they want to get the trees in there so that the roots started to take out there instead of putting, bedding them down and have the roots start taking and spraying and then ripping them out, spraying them over here. So he's working real hard to get off his, his bunch of the trees again that he can. Anything to add on that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Something that went down last week, as you can see in the upper right there, we've set the precast C X T restrooms and then post-hence in those together. It's nice, it also has the, where do you put the food at?
Concession.
Yeah, the concessions, a portion to it. And then they also are installing some playground equipment there as well. You can see where the pavilion area, they got the concrete board. They haven't finished getting crushed rock in yet, but they'll probably have that, they will have that done by the end of the year, barring some really bad weather. And then this, this one might be hard to see, but if you look in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the Mission Roundabout. And I'm sure everybody's curious about that. We have been getting some complaints about that, that it's still not open. But they're telling me that it should be 100% complete either tomorrow or first thing Thursday morning, it'll be open. So I think that's good news.
Quick question on Orchard Park. Have we had any trouble with vandalism over there? Because I thought when I drove by one day a couple of months ago, there was maybe some graffiti on one of the playground structures.
It hasn't, no, the reports are that it hasn't been bad. Last week, we had somebody, they just put the sod in, in the green area between the road and the sidewalk. And somebody came through the park and then tore over the sod and tore it all up. But that was fairly, it was so soft that, you know, it had only been installed for probably a couple of hours at that time. But other than that, the contractor actually leaves his boxes all unlocked. Because he figures, if they're going to steal it, they'll just damage his boxes getting in to, you know, to cut the lock and do whatever they got to do to get in. So he just leaves, he leaves his stuff open and he hasn't had any trouble, so.
Yeah, I thought I saw something on that green weird one place structure. Five, two.
So I thought it was the same thing, but it's actually part of the fixture itself.
Okay. Maybe next time I should wear my glasses more.
So two last things on the two big projects coming up. We've got the Harbor Bridge overlay. This is, this is actually wrong. The first bullet point is wrong. We actually have approval from the T I B. Actually, your package tonight, you have the contract signed. So I got twisted up when I did that, sorry. But basically, we've got parametrics online to do the design. We have a contract, preliminary contract to review so that when we do get the grant, we can cut them loose on the design after we come to council approval, get council approval for the contract to be able to sign it. So that is progressing.
Progressing.
The last one I'm going to talk about, I believe, is the Harbor Bridge widening and we have nine new grant extensions. We've got, as everybody knows, we have the designer on board K P F F. They are working on it. They are trying to commit to a June completion date for us, which is important for the funding. I talked to Wosh dot this week and they want it in this biennium. So that's still true. They said they would work with us if we don't get it, but they do want it in this biennium, which is in June 30th. So they're making good progress on the preliminary documents. They've got the basis of design done, which is basically, it's a justification report and then a justification report. They're two kind of similar reports, but it's kind of checker boxes. They, Wosh that didn't think it was really important, other than you got to do it because it's part of the design process and F H W A needs to review those and prove those for the projects before. So we've got that. Geotech exploration, it should be happening in the next week or two. They just pulled their full permits right now. And then we're heading towards the 30% design drawings, which I think they're probably a month off before we have the 30%. Obviously, they have to get geotech reports and do some other things, so. So it seems like the process is working well on Wosh dot and K P F F seem like they're getting along great. And also, that's good news.
Has K P F F done more, they've done more work in the past, haven't they?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
One question. If you've answered this already, just tell me that you have, because I've got your ladyship there. The digging that caused the gas problem, whatever that was, who was doing that? What company?
That was Qantas.
And what was that regarding to?
They put in, was it fiber cable, fiber optics, I guess. And I don't know, is that purpose of it? It seems like it's going over to the, you know, it started on Henry Road and came down Country Vista. It's going up Mission right now. And it looks like it's going to the Technology Park. And that's what I know about that. But it doesn't, it's not one of our contractors. So I, you know, basically, I follow the traffic control. I go out and try and check their traffic control every day to make sure that it's.
So they pulled all the necessary permits?
They have pulled all the permits.
Did they call, did they call 411 to?
Yeah, they called 811, which is the locator.
811, thank you.
Yeah, and everything they've got's been located. They did do some damage on Henry Road that we're after and forward to fix. Because, you know, that road's in bad shape, that basically it's, the shoulder breaks down, so.
Who are they providing service for, do you know, sir?
It is Verizon, at least.
Verizon?
Yeah.
Thank you, Scott.
Just a quick question. So it looks like the Country Vista completion is close to being finished. Looks like they had, when I was by there this weekend, it was like they had a big truck blocking out to finally keep people out of there. Do we know when Greenstone is going to space, maybe turning that road over to the city? I was just curious what the timeframe was.
Yeah, I'm basically on Country Vista, an extension in Michigan. So, yeah, they, I talked to Kevin at the Shineville about that this morning and they're just waiting for weather. And then there's one other thing they want to do. They want to do a couple more bump out islands on the horse, and it's already completed for a traffic call. So it's probably still a little ways out by the time we get those islands in, I would guess.
They have nothing overlaying to do on that.
Yeah, they have one more, they've got one more left today. There's a lot of engine athletes that they have to put on there, so.
Thanks.
Lisa?
All righty, I'm going to, I'm going to try and go quickly and focus principally on the many things you have on your agenda tonight so that we can address some questions. And what I'd like to spend the most time on is just sharing with you a little bit of background on the capital facility plan, because I think that that's probably one of the biggest items. The 2018 Development Code Amendment hearing. So the way this hearing is going to operate is you're going to accept testimony for all three of those. I will briefly, very briefly introduce it. The applicant will have an opportunity to present and then the public will have an opportunity to testify. What I wanted to share with you on that is it's important that your deliberations be done separately on each of those. And you'll notice that there's not any ordinances in your packet because we really wanted you to deliberate first and not waste any time writing ordinances on things that may not be coming forward. So that, so based upon your decision, any that you approve will come back on November 20th. We've got the annexation hearing also, that's the first hearing. Again, staff will very briefly introduce it. Ben Small will be here to talk about, to talk about it and answer any questions. And then the public will have an opportunity to testify. I do have one written comment from the coverage that I will share with you that I'll actually distribute it before the meeting. And that one, we have a first read of the ordinance on December 4th. And the second hearing and the second read of the ordinance will be on December 18th. Rocky Hill Fourth Edition Final Flat Resolution is simple and straightforward. Very quick presentation on that. And the Serinda Network Franchise Agreement, that's a first read ordinance. We'll have a second read on November 20th. So I'm going to switch gears now and talk about the capital facilities plan very quickly. So just some things I want to share with you about the organization. So the capital improvements are listed in blue on that. And the pink indicates asset management projects. There is also an area in green that indicates capital facility projects by others. And these are things that are potentially fundable to tick them with, that we have to include in there. I want to make the point that our efforts at asset management are preliminary based upon known projects and assets and that it will become much more refined with the asset manager, management software proposed for purchase in 2019, which is project number 15. As it relates to prioritization and project schedules, you notice the first column of the capital facilities projects indicates council's collective prioritization of those projects. Those items with red lines in the title were prioritized by view, but there are changes to them. And so we did it as a red line so you could see how those were changed. In some cases, they're reflected in a different category of projects or they're part of a larger project. In other cases, they changed. I'm going to point to project number four, eight and 13 as examples of that. And you'll see the explanation in the notes as to what has changed. Some of the prioritized projects funded in 2018 that were not completed are actually going to, the funds are going to roll into 2019, so you'll see that in the budget. And the example I would give is Orchard Park. you'll see that in the budget. Um, uh, and the example I would give is Orchard Park. In cases where master planning is proposed, funding in subsequent years is, um, is anticipated to be determined through that master planning process. So all you see is the funds for the master planning, and then we can add to the capital facility plan in future years. In cases where there's insufficient information to, to establish a cost estimate, we've put TBD to be determined as a placeholder. Um, I also have to point out that we had to do a little workload balancing. We started with more projects in 2019 than we felt we could accomplish with existing staff, and so some, so, so we had to move some of the projects out. In some cases, uh, uh, the timing was related to technical needs and requirements, I, such as the timing of grants, um, time needed for design and availability of construction funding. So we made some, some educated guesses as it relates to that. Um, uh, generally, we followed schedule and funding needs identified in the Transportation Improvement Plan, which we adopted in, in August, with, with a couple of exceptions. So the Harvard Road, Road Bridge Widening, project number 17, we added the West Bound Ramp. Henry Road Overpass, number 18, moved up the timing to 2021 and 2022 for construction. We added Country Vista Corridor and Network, Corridor Study and Network Analysis Update as number 28, because of all the activity that's going on in, out on Country Vista Corridor. Um, we, for, the Harvard Road Bridge Overlay, we updated both the timing and the dollar amount based on more, uh, better information, and because we wanted to move it up sooner, we, given the condition of, uh, the deck, we couldn't wait the four or five years until that project's funded, and you heard about that in the last meeting, so I'm not gonna go into that in any detail unless you have questions. Um, we added Mission Avenue Overlay from Country Vista to Multer, Multer based on need, but the timing for that is contingent upon our securing TIB funding for it. So we wanted to have that on the list, because we can't go after TIB funding if we don't have it on the list. Um, and, uh, the last one that I would note is project number 26. Mission Avenue from Glenn Burke to Cor, Corrigan is proposed for funding for design in 2019. 2019 Cheek Cheek, the foot review, it only shows 250,000. That's just for design. Uh, it's not, it's, so I, I want you to realize that, number one. Number two, we're showing it for construction in 2020, but I have to point out, and we, we reflected this in the, the Transportation Program, that that's one that potentially the city will participate with others, that, that, um, it's probably a joint project. But again, because it was an important one, one of your priorities, we did include it in this. So we did, we did adjust. Um, uh, the one, the one last thing I wanna say about priorities is that there may be some projects listed in this plan that are vestiges of old discussions. Um, if there are projects that are no longer relevant, or that they're no longer considered priorities, that's the role of council to remove them. And, uh, we just tried to, as best as possible, accurately reflect what had happened before and what we heard in the, in the strategic planning process. So I thought that was important. The one other thing I wanna say about the capital facilities plan has to do with funding levels. So, number one, I wanna say this dollar amounts included in the CFP attempted to provide you with fully loaded costs, which include design, construction, construction engineering, construction inspection and contingency. That's something you haven't seen before, and I think it speaks to the challenge that some of the council members have had, with saying, well, look, we didn't know it was going to cost this much. So we're, we're trying to, we're trying to do a better job of it. One of the things I also wanna say about funding levels is that primary focus should be on projects funded in 2019 and 2020. Uh, timing and cost estimates in our years will need to be refined annually, um, and keeping in mind that this six-year CFP is intended to be a roadmap, that things change, priorities crop up, uh, timing has to change. We get better information, but we have really good information, I believe, on the projects that we've proposed for 2019 and 2020. Um, the last thing I wanna say on this is just the schedule and timing for your CFP review and adoption. So tonight is the first of two public hearings. The purpose of this is specifically to allow the public to have the opportunity to comment on it, which is why I wanted to do this now, so that I wasn't eating up their time. Uh, the second hearing is scheduled for November 20th, um, and we will do the first read and second read of the ordinance on the same night as the scheduled public hearings, but this is really an important point. Um, you can continue to deliberate on the CFP, um, uh, beyond those two hearing dates and in concert with the budget. Obviously, if you make changes to the CFP, it may have impacts on the budget. And so really, you're not, just because we have the, the hearings and those two, um, ordinance reads, you do not have to act on it until you're ready to act on it with the budget. And so I really wanted to make that. Um, and last question is, the last one's a question. We are gonna do a deeper dive into project 2B, which is the Public Works Yard on November 20th, and Scott's working, Scott's working on a memo that's gonna share with you the details that you're looking for, the, the conceptual plan, the cost estimates, the phasing, what's included, what, and, and the timing of it, and the phasing can certainly change and whatnot. There may be elements of that that you choose not to go forward with. So we'll have that ready for you on the 20th. The one question that I wanted to ask of you all, um, are, are there other projects on this list that you'd like to take that deeper dive into, have a little bit more information? And I'd like to be able to bring those back to you on the 20th if you want.
So, so a quick comment and then a question, and kind of hopefully we'll answer your question. So, I, there's a couple discrepancies with regards to first read, second reads, public hearings and stuff. So to, on tonight's agenda, 14B, we have a first read ordinance on the capital facilities plan. You just said that December, November 20th, we're gonna do first and second read. So.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I meant to, I, 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 we, we're doing the first and second read on the two nights that we have hearing scheduled. So.
Oh, okay.
First read tonight, second read on the 20th.
Okay. So my, my request, and maybe we, we, maybe we need to talk about this more when we get to this, since we, we're just in workshop and I don't expect to make any, take any votes. But my proposal would be that we move the second read ordinance to December 4th to allow us to do a deeper dive as a team during the workshop that we have scheduled on the 27th of November.
Easy, easy, gone.
Thank you. Because it's a lot of, it, the, CFP has a lot of information. That was a lot of new information, so I think the longest probably needs more time to digest that.
And I will, I, I did actually print out my talking points here to share with you, so that, so I'm, so that you can.
Match those up with my paper. Thanks, Lisa.
Okay.
Mr. Murray, move to excuse council members, Brett and Mark, and Seamus, due to illness and family illness.
Second.
Move to second, prove the discussion. I hear you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go. They said this before you.
Can I move the agenda as printed?
Second.
Second.
Prove this second. Further discussion. I hear you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, any comments? Not bad. Any comments from us? You get two shots at this, but again, if you end on some, at the public hearings, you're gonna get a lot of, so you have a lot of time to comment. Not hearing any, we're gonna move on to a special presentation and that's the deputy police officer recommendations chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the community. Um, I would like to have Sergeant Jeff Jones and Officer Mark Holthaus come up, please. So what I have tonight, uh, to recognize these two officers, um, I have a letter of commendation for each of them for the same incident. Uh, and I'll leave some, uh, comments that I made about the incident. Letter of commendation are presented to Sergeant Jeff Jones and Officer Mark Holthaus for their recent efforts involving a hit-and-run fatality incident that occurred on October 18th. During the initial response, they were able to assess the crash scene, call in the additional resources necessary to ensure the integrity of that investigation. In one of the crime scene, they were able to collect evidence that would later prove to be invaluable in locating the suspect vehicle, which ultimately led to making, thus making an arrest. The officers demonstrated our organizational values. He kept the victim's family informed throughout the investigation and advised the family anytime prior to the department sending out a press release. They canvassed the neighborhood in search of witnesses or potential video that may help with the investigation, as there were no eyewitnesses to this tragic incident. Through their efforts, they were able to obtain video, surveillance footage from Central Valley School District, showing a vehicle in the area shortly after this incident. Using available technology and with assistance of the community, they were able to locate the vehicle of interest and brought that vehicle to the Liberty Lake Police Department. Sergeant Jones and Officer Holthaus applied for and were granted a search warrant for the vehicle of interest. They requested the assistance of the Washington State Patrol Crime Scene Response Team to execute that warrant and collect potential evidence from the vehicle. Comparing evidence that they recovered from the crime scene to evidence recovered from the vehicle of interest, they're able to identify the suspect and develop probable cause to make the arrest. The suspect was interviewed by Sergeant Jones and Officer Holthaus. During that interview, the suspect provided a statement, statement which resulted in the suspect being booked into the county jail for vehicular homicide. Sergeant Jones and Officer Holthaus are to be commended for their tenacious investigative work regarding this tragic incident that occurred in our community, and were able to bring the responsible person to justice. So for that, I have letters of commendation for each of them. In addition to the letters, I'm also presenting each of them with the Chief's charge card.
Okay.
Dismissed.
Jeff and Mark, before you run off, uh, I wanted to tell you that Marilyn, my neighbor, and Scott, her husband, had nothing but good things to say about Jeff, how you contacted them to care of the issues. You were touching the family. Um, it was a huge loss to their, their family, huge family. And, uh, and he was so appreciative of our police force and your efforts. So thank you from the bottom of our community's heart.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
By the way, our detective during this incident was taking care of his wife that was having some health issues, and so our detective was not available to assist in this investigation. So those two were able to complete it all on their own.
Wow.
Next, I have another recommendation, so I'd like to have Officer Brad Dynas. Bring him in, please. So this is a, a recommendation that was made by his Sergeant Darren Morgan, uh, to have him receive our Meritorious Conduct Award. Uh, this is involving an incident that occurred back in August at about 8:45 in the morning. Officer Dynas responded to a suicidal person with a weapon at the Exxon station near the corner of Trent and Evergreen. Officer Dynas recognized the danger of the situation and responded with our Liberty Lake Police Department armored vehicle to provide additional protection for all the officers that were responding to that. Officer Dynas positioned the vehicle near the suspect vehicle, which allowed for county officers to begin the negotiation and to communicate with the male, a suicidal male that was in very close proximity to where our officers were. After hours of failed attempts to get the male to come out of the vehicle, the male sat up with his gun and began to fire his weapon, um, at the vehicle that Officer Dynas and some other county officers were sitting. Officers returned fire and eliminated the threat after the suspect's shots hit the armored vehicle. So this person fired at least two rounds, maybe more, and one of the rounds hit the windshield where Officer Dynas was sitting, and the other one hit the mirror on our armored vehicle. Armored vehicle did its job and stopped those bullets from entering the vehicle and causing harm to our officers. Officer Dynas's quick response, dedication to duty, and genuine concern for the public's safety, as well as the safety of his fellow officers, resulted in my as being saved. His actions are at the record, reflection of his overall professionalism, and bring great credit to himself, the Liberty Lake Police Department, and the city of Liberty Lake. So with that, Officer Dynas, present to you with the Liberty Lake's Meritorious Service. That's all I have for tonight.
Thanks, sir.
You guys did busy. Thank you. See, boards, commission reports, sir. Library board? There you go.
Good evening, everybody. At our workshop last week, you, there were questions asked about the library needs assessment. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the purpose of that and some of the possible results from it, from just the board's perspective. The purpose of a needs assessment, which is a $40,000 item in, in, in our budget, is to develop a plan to take the library from where it is today to where, and I emphasize, the community needs it to be three to five years from now. The plan becomes a roadmap. It establishes priorities. It guides our daily decisions around those priorities. It moves the library forward, and it helps us to develop initiatives in which we can be more involved with our community, partnering with agencies in our community. Some of the questions that we hope to get answered might be, how is our community changing from a socioeconomic standpoint, from a demographic, demographic standpoint, and from our various development plans? What organizations and programs in the community might the library partner with for future projects? Who uses the library and why? And who doesn't use the library and why not? What additional services or programs might better meet segments of our community? And possibly asking, are our physical facilities okay for providing library services? What are the community expectations regarding the library in the future? Are the library hours and staffing patterns working for our community? That's just a minimal number of questions that we need answers to, which a needs assessment would provide. Those answers, as well as answers to other questions, would guide the daily short-term and long-term decisions of the library. I really want to emphasize also that as then we, after we have done the needs assessment, then it's our job as a library to come back and say, we are doing this because your community said this, and we're spending money this way because your community said we need this. We're not doing this anymore because your community said we don't like that. We don't want that anymore. There's a reason, there's data for making decisions. Let's find it out, and let's help make our decisions and our priorities fit our community. That's all.
Thank you. Parks and Art? Anything? You guys? No? What other commissioners we have here tonight? Anybody? Surin Water, is our Surin Water guys here? No? No? Everybody's our election party? Okay. City Council reports?
I'll take one, Steve. Um, so like, I think, uh, last week I was able to attend, uh, spoken at LA Tech on a Central Valley School District's facilities, um, at. School District's facilities, Community Connections event. This is an opportunity that the district presents to get a better picture of understanding what goes on inside these facilities. And it was an excellent moment for me personally as an engineer to listen and understand more about what specific training, actions, and projects are being taken on by the students. What I want to draw attention to is, one of the student groups who stood up and then began to describe in elaborate detail, planning, project management, budgeting, and execution for a wandering story sign program for the city of Liberty Lake. I want to draw this forward as yet another excellent example of collaboration between the agencies, public agencies, and our community. That we as a city have an objective, a want, a wish, it's been outlined to us clearly from the Parks and Arts Commission, and that there is an excellent resource of students to be able to execute on bringing that project to life. So, really fun. I think I want to have these guys in here to kind of give that presentation to this group as well. I think Jen, they're presenting that content to the Parks and Arts Commission, but I think it'd be great for the council to read that too. So after they've had their turn, the commission, consider how they could be scheduled for this group.
I had one, Steve. I'd like to, what I'd like to address is a, in our last meeting, which I think was the 16th or something like that, it was brought to my attention that I made a comment, which at the time I thought I couldn't have made that. When I went back and listened to tape, it sure left. What I was talking about is that it's unfortunate at times that many of our projects come in old way over. And what I was quoted as saying is that I apparently had said that every project comes in. At the time, I thought, there's no way I could have said that. So I went back and checked it, and guess what? That's exactly what I said. And right after that, I listened to the tape. You and Chris had brought up about, well, we don't do that all the time, and I agreed with you. And then Katie brought something up on many projects that were on. And I commented, I says, yes, for example, the million dollars for the irrigation system within Week 3, we saved that. The benefit of that happening is I really have to give credit to RJ, because if RJ hadn't taken the initiative to not be concerned about how I was going to respond to that, bring it to my attention, I never would have been prompted to go back and listen to the tape. And it was actually correct. So thanks, RJ, I do appreciate that. On the lighter side, this is a lunch night. A friend called my wife today while I was there and said, oh, guess what? A year ago was lunch night. Sit down, says, Mike, I liked it a year ago. And I go, oh, that's right. And he says, well, that's a combination of joy, happiness, and sadness. And I said, joy and happiness? He said, yes, Benny is joyful and happy, but you're going to be out of the house on a regular basis. And he said sadness? I'm not going to get into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other reports? Anywhere to go on? City administrator reports? Is this RJ tonight?
Yeah, this is RJ. We're going to start though, our civil engineer Scott Bernard is going to give an update on the mission in Country Vista, the unfortunate accident that happened back in October. And he's going to answer any questions you might have regarding that.
So in the absence of Katie Allen, she asked me to come say a few words about the intersection where we had that accident, the traffic accident. And, you know, obviously, everybody's in shock after an event like this. You know, I'm sure a lot of people talk about it among themselves and think about it. And, you know, one of the things we don't want to do is overreact, so we wanted to actually sit back and take, you know, take a look at what's really going on with that intersection. So we did have one form, I'm sure all of you guys probably got comments, or people talked to you about it, but we did give one form of a comment, and it started by saying thank you to the police for the Exxon job. So they're very gracious that way. And they also said that they're a traffic engineer from Kelso. And I think a lot of us citizens are traffic engineers, you know, since we've been here. They did have, you know, they asked us to consider, hey, roundabout speed bumps, or four-way stop at that location. So there's a picture of the intersection right there, and if you look at it, you see that that intersection has stop signs on both legs of Country Vista. There's pedestrian, there's pedestrian crossing with lights. And East Mission right now is in R2 with a speed limit of 35 miles an hour. That's the background. Also, if you look at that picture, you can see there really aren't any visual obstructions on any of the corners, right? And they're all pretty wide open for quite a distance. So in 2016, we had a Liberty Lake traffic study that, you know, looked at traffic all over Liberty Lake, and looked at basically every single intersection we have in the city. And this Mission Country Vista intersection was one that they looked at, along with, and obviously, they looked at Multer and Mission as well. And if you go to that study, basically what it says, it says, Mission in peak hour, which is in the afternoon or in the morning at this location, hits basically three vehicles per minute. If you look at the peak hour queue on Country Vista, and that's how far does it back up? You know, like I remember, you're like a guy that backs up until your lights work, right? But here, basically, it's one car, you know, it's 20 feet. The queue, the average peak hour queue is one car. So I thought it'd be worthwhile to go out and actually look at the intersection now, has anything changed fundamentally since 2016? So I know I might have thought I'm sitting by goofing off, but I was watching the traffic. And so I watched it for a while during the peak hour in the morning. And what I found there was that the longest wait time on Country Vista was somewhere around 10 seconds, so not very long. In general, most of the cars, when they come up to the intersection, they're able to go almost immediately. It's very, it's pretty quick. The biggest queue I saw, or cars backed up, was two cars. And they busted out of that queue within probably 15 seconds, 15 to 20 seconds, they weren't there very long. So, you know, I saw an average of three cars per minute on Country Vista. The other thing I did while I was there, I reviewed the site distances again, and measured them off, and I mean, I paced them off, but I did measure them and compared them to what the code requires as far as trees and how far they're supposed to go back from the intersections and that type of thing. And they're all per code. It's per code, there's nothing that's not per code there. So the traffic study did not recommend any action at this intersection. It's just such a low priority intersection compared to all the other, a lot of the other major intersections that we have in Liberty Lake. So, you know, what we, our determination was that really visibility was a non-factor, it was good visibility. Speed was a non-factor, because that didn't only happen in this particular case. I'm not saying that there isn't speeding on Mission sometimes, but in this particular accident, speed was not a factor. And I confirmed that with Brian. We, I reviewed all this with Brian, and we've talked about this and where we really want to go with this. Congestion wasn't a factor in this particular accident, so. So right now at this time, and this is, you know, also been through this with Katie and Dennis, Scott, if you guys know, and Brian as well, that staff recommends at this time we'll change the intersection. It's a reasonably well-functioning intersection most of the time. There were other factors in this accident. Brian has indicated that he's planning on increasing the police presence. Obviously, that's not a permanent thing, you can't be there all the time, but it is something. And then something I found in talking to Brian was that some of the officers said, hey, you know, it is kind of goofy that, you know, everybody comes down the hill on Mission, and it's 25 miles an hour, and all of a sudden it speeds up to 35 miles an hour, right where they go by the park. Right? And then you come into the roundabout, we have to slow down, and then, you know, and then everybody knows what happens from there. So this was kind of a last minute thing I put on there, and it's not an official recommendation, but I do want to talk further with Brian and probably Katie and the council about, hey, do you want to consider modifying the speed limit at that location? And I don't think that's a discussion for tonight, but just to let you know a little bit.
Are there plans to maybe do another observation in the spring after that cut-through is finished to have a way from Country Vista? As I expect that that intersection will quite get more traffic from the Country Vista sides once that goes through.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, matter of fact, Kevin and I talked about this today, is that one of the things that we've done, Stephen and I have done recently, is we've gone around to all the neighborhoods in Liberty Lake and look at the sign. Because a lot of times, the way our streets have been put in is we approve, you know, 500 feet of street, and it has a couple stubs up there, right? And then we approved another 300 feet of street, and it's got a couple stubs. And maybe necessarily, we didn't always get the stop signs in the right places. So we're actually doing a full city review of that right now to see if that makes sense. And definitely, there's an issue on Country Vista, where we're concerned about speed. And as part of that, I talked to Kevin, and he's looking at some traffic calming things that I mentioned earlier, where some of you weren't here, that maybe put some more islands in or some similar things that have a tendency, has a common effect and tends to slow traffic. So, yeah, I think it's definitely something we should look at after we get that open. I believe that you're looking at at least one or six weeks before Country Vista's complete, and that was.
Question on the 25, Chief, and as both of you, to reduce it, to put up the speed limit sign of 25 from 35 right now, is there any criteria that would prevent us from doing that tomorrow?
Well, there is a process for it. I mean, there's a couple things you're supposed to do. You either have to have a traffic engineer look at it and bless it. And the other thing they do is preponderance of the traffic, what is the preponderance of the traffic and speed that they're going, it's something you have to look at.
I'm just looking at.
So I mean, could we? We probably could, but I think there are some steps you could put on tape, and I think maybe the council wants to weigh in on that, like we did on Country Vista back in the day.
I personally would support a reduction of 25 miles an hour for that purpose. So I would say begin with the steps necessary, evaluations of a traffic engineer or other.
I would support more along with the process than whatever's necessary to look at that and with the idea of going to 25. I think the process is important.
Yeah.
Scott, are you through, sir?
Yeah.
Scott, would you bring back the staff as well, please, that we look at all city parks and the speed limits in front of those? Okay? Let's not get wound up just in that one Rocky Hill Park. Let's look at all of them and see if we have to make this more of a blanket assessment for all park areas, including Orchard Park. Appreciate it, and thank you for what you've done so far.
Okay. Let's pass somebody else, okay? All right, thank you.
All right. So the next thing on the report is to come out just to let you know about some other dates that are coming up. So next week, City Hall Library is closed and observance of Veterans Day on Monday 12. 'Tis the season is set for Monday, December 3 at 7:00 PM. And at the next council meeting, the bishop will be here to kind of give a rundown of that walk to Bethlehem that he's done in the past, so he'll be updating on that. Santa will be at the, on the city hobbying clothes and library clothes, the golf course will be open, so I didn't include that. So if you want to go golfing, that'll be a good day. Santa will be at the library on December 15 from 10:30, 1:30. Jocelyn mentioned that at the 6:00 PM portion. So the fall leaf pickup, it's actually in, starting as of yesterday, but they start on by the lake and around the beach area. November 10 is when they will be hitting the residents on this side of the freeway, and then on December, or November 13 will be over on the north side. There is a flyer information on the city's website and also on Facebook for residents to have questions about what they need to do or what the times look like for that. Our staff Christmas party, we set that for December 13 at 11:30 AM for here. And just a reminder, on the November 27, three weeks, we'll have the city council workshop on the capital facilities plan. And we talked about postponing the second read ordinance to December 4, so, which I thought is a good recommendation, and something we had been talking about too, is there's no rush for that one. And then, so I put tentative because we, last week, we scheduled our exhortative with our state auditor's office for November 9 at 9:00 AM, but as today, I don't think any, unless you have gotten a notice from the state auditor's office that we're having that meeting, we hadn't gotten it either, so that's why I put tentative. But it'll be here at 9:00 AM. They are recommending a phone interview, so they may actually not be on site, and we'll do it in a small conference room. So there's a lot of people will pile in.
So that is, it is for sure scheduled, is it?
I'm going to confirm tomorrow with council that it is for 9:00 AM on the night. So we did have at least verbally communicating with the state auditor's office that that sounded like a really good date, but then I realized this morning, you know, from what I could tell, no one in council or city clerk had been notified that they, because you should get a letter from them scheduling that, so. And if they just want to sign the letter and say everything is good, I'm good with that too, and we don't have to have an ex-interview, but I don't think they'll go there. So then the last thing is to let you know that I've provided monthly and quarterly reports in either your mailbox, or I put the monthly dashboard on your desk tonight, so please take a look at that. If you have any questions, let me know. Yes?
Just a quick question, RJ. I'm curious, and you probably don't know off the top of your head, where we might be on your red green scale this year as compared to last year? I'm curious. If we're about the same or if we're separate?
I will pull that, but it's about the same. And it's about the same because the sales tax revenues even last year were exceeding expectation, and that's really probably the primary one where that graph goes. I think the only thing that was causing me any kind of grief last year was the utility tax when it related to Verizon and what was happening with them. Our sales tax compared to last year at this time is up about 5.7%, which is really good. It's actually 12% back in June higher than last year, so we were tracking higher, the gap is getting a little bit closer. And then permit revenue, not as high as we were last year, but it's definitely higher than we had been in years past. All right? We're good.
Action items.
I was trying to move action item A, consent to double drive number 1 and 2, including approval of the October 16, 2018 city council minutes, and approval of November 6, 2018 vouchers in the amount of $470,833.19.
Second.
Eighty-three dollars?
Eight hundred eighty-three, $470,883.19.
She said total. Say 37.
Nineteen?
It's 83, 19, right?
$470,883.19.
She did it right. Counselor, two. Pick that up, right up on it. You got a nap, boy.
Was that on target?
I think, we keep on your second inversion. Own your second inversion.
I thought I heard it right, but I don't have legal ears.
So it's first and second, any further discussion? I hear you on papers, I. I oppose, and you go. General business.
I was trying to move action item 11B1, general business approval of the annual Bias support agreement in the amount of $7,627.75.
Second. Do you get that? Second. Move the second.
I have a question concerning contract. I tried to probably look at the contract, and there was a charge on there for backup. And Katie's mentioned a couple of times that they've had problems with systems going down and not having sufficient backup to bring it back up immediately.
So this particular backup is on the financial software piece, so it is a redundancy on the side of if we lost everything here with our system and server, we could go actually down to Bias's headquarters office, and they could pull up our financial and payroll data there, and we could actually execute payroll off-site.
Okay, so they're maintaining the backup there?
They're maintaining a backup there, so.
Very good, thank you. Further discussion? I hear you on papers, I.
I.
I. Move action item 11B2, authorize the purchase and installation of a security system in the amount of $6,433.34.
Second. Move the second. Discussion. I hear you on papers, I.
I.
There you go.
Move action item 11B3, authorize Mayor Peterson to enter into the agreement with the state of Washington Office of the Secretary of State Archives and Records Management Division.
Second. Move the second. Further discussion? I hear you on papers, I. I.
Move action item 11, action item B4, move purchase, approved purchase of two-way radios in the amount of $10,255.73 for the operations and maintenance department.
Second. Move the second. Discussion. This question? Another question. Please go ready. All right. Thank you.
Bob, you're first.
Thank you. My question is, why do we?
Yes, they are kind of expensive, 10, 15-year life program out of them. This allows us safe communication when operating equipment, allows us mass communication with everybody that is on our system to talk to them all at once. So, the safety and mass communication, particularly with snowplow, is quite essential for us on that.
Do they come with air funds so you can hear over the?
No, actually, the ones that will be placed in the equipment are what we would call a mobile radio. It's a similar size and look as a CB unit. So, it's got a hand mic, you press it, anybody on that frequency, they hear what we're saying and they know exactly what's going on then.
Great. Question, is that just to be attached to the equipment or is that something they will be able to hold on to?
Both. We're getting what I would call six mobiles. Those will be placed in a couple of the pickups and the ice truck and then the rest of the equipment. We are getting six handhelds for our plowing, for our trails, events, which that's where we would get the earbuds for, so that way we can communicate to somebody at the park. You can get on the radios a little bit quicker than a cell phone, too. You can get on, hey, or I'm looking for this person or kid's lost, you know, we can basically reach everybody all at once on our frequency. This does come with an FCC license that we will have three of our own frequencies that will be designated to us.
Mr. Mayor?
Chief? Could you go ahead and stand up for a few seconds, please? Have you two coordinated your proposed radio that allows the police to contact you via the radio, not necessarily your side contact them? But does the police have the authority and the ability to monitor or switch to and talk to you?
Do you want to answer that?
Well, doesn't that have to be my answer?
I have checked into that. One of my jobs that I've worked at, we were able to communicate with police, but my understanding is they've gone to a different frequency than what these will be. My conversation with Steve at Industrial Communication, it is possible that their radios are not compatible with what we would be asked. It would require new radios.
Okay. May I make a suggestion to you?
Yes.
I may be wrong, but the documenting attachments that I read along with this indicated only six radios being bought?
Total of 12.
Total of 12, thank you for clarifying. Can we make it 13 and assign one to the PD desk where they could monitor the traffic themselves and if need be, they have a way to get to you while everybody's out in the field or to report to you problem areas in the street, whatever? Think we could make that happen?
I'm fine with that. That would be up to the chief.
Chief, are you okay with that?
So, our radios are, we're on a hit or a mega-hertz, trunk security system, not compatible.
Yes.
So, yeah, that would be the only way that would work.
Is that okay with you?
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
One or two. Either one in the patrol car or one in the?
Well, no, probably not.
Just wanted to, thank you both, I appreciate it. If we could account for an extra radio, please?
You could just watch, just either that or just pass this and they can bring back whatever the cost of an hour is if they.
Thank you.
It's a motion to approve what?
The additional radio.
And the additional one will have our.
Yeah, they'll come back to you, you know, on camera.
I'm assuming, but I'm sorry, I don't mean to dominate this, but I've had some experience. I'm assuming that here, this office, the administrator's office, the mayor's office, somebody's office is also going to have a communication with you via radio.
Yeah, Jen would be the one that would have it.
But Jen's not always here, okay? Jen's out on the street a lot, you know?
I hear it from Gordon's point, I mean, so, okay, we're going to pass to 10,255. You guys are going to come back to us in the plan so that the chief has a radio and Jennifer has a radio and Katie has a radio and whoever needs a radio during these times. I don't know, if they're like 200 or 300 bucks a piece, a handheld, I don't know what they are.
But I think they're closer to five.
Would it be possible to relay this just a little bit, okay, or to pass it and just tell you that we'd like to get together with you or at least get together with the mayor and let's make this a comprehensive package for communications, okay? Obviously, I think the mayor should have one in his car or portable, okay? I think that's a direct necessity. I also think that here at the city hall should have the ability to contact. Jen will, but she's not always here. So, if we could just kind of think about this just a little bit more, include everybody that in an emergency situation would be able to need it, and let's move forward and go ahead and do it the right way.
Okay, I appreciate passing.
At least what I think is right.
Yeah, I would appreciate passing this tonight so I can get, he has to order everything and then that gives him basically hopefully a month to get everything installed before I'm really going to need everything. I like your idea. It is going to require a little bit of research on my, our end to figure out the best solution for what we would need to either install Jen's, Katie's, the mayor, wherever we need to get them.
Right.
And make sure we're getting the right equipment, because the ones that will like, would go with the chief do require a special box, the inverter, basically takes it from AC to DC power. So, I'd have to do a little research on that.
I would support going ahead with this and then having the additional units brought back, knowing that it sounds like based on our discussion, we would support that, we just don't have the details.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Happy to do that.
Thank you, sir.
So, the motion's on the floor, further discussion? Not hearing on papers, say aye. I oppose, there you go.
Move action item general business B number five, authorize Mayor Peterson to enter into the agreement with Tinker Garden for winter and early spring progress.
This might not my deal.
Well, I'll second that.
So, it is a, just to specify, it's actually a three-year agreement, not an 18 and 19.
Further discussion?
Yes. Because we all need to know more about Tinker Garden. Did I read that correctly? Are we funding this in any way?
No, sir.
Okay, correct.
They are paying the city 20% in revenues to use the parks.
Because I was reading, and it's not like a great program for 18 months to eight years a day, but I wondered the dates, it was in February and March, so.
Yeah, and they go throughout the season. They have, they have like a spring season, a summer season and a fall season and a winter season.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, further discussion? Not hearing on papers, say aye. I oppose, there you go.
Move action item B6, approve the TIB grant agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second. Who is the second? Further discussion?
Yes. Because we all need to know more about Tinker Garden. Did I read that correctly? Are we funding this in any way?
No, sir.
Okay, correct.
They are paying the city 20% in revenues to use the parks.
Because I was, I was reading, and it's not like a great program for 18 months to eight years a day, but I wondered the dates, it was in February and March, so.
Yeah, and they go throughout the season. They have, they have like a spring season, a summer season and a fall season and a winter season.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, further discussion? Not hearing on papers, say aye. I oppose, there you go.
Move action item B6, six, approve the TIB grant agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second. Who is the second? Further discussion? Not hearing on papers, say aye. I oppose, there you go. Okay, it's almost 8:00. We have public hearings tonight. Excuse me. The first one is on the City of Liberty Lake's preliminary 2019 budget. RJ gave us a breakout last time, right? And so, we, it's been on our website. We invite the members to comment on our 2019 budget. This is the second hearing?
This is the first hearing.
The first, this is the first public hearing, so this is the first public hearing, this will be the other one.
I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. We're doing three this year. This is the second one, second of three.
Right, second of three, so. If you'd like to make a comment on our budget, where we should be spending our money or saving our money or not spending our money, we'll take those comments now. And so, starting at 7:45, not hearing anybody coming forward, we're going to close it at 7:46. And do, if you take time to visit the city website on the budget, so you can fully understand our commitment to our priorities, we're spending in operations, in capital facilities, in commissions, in our parks, in our staff, in our streets. It's all there in black and white, orange, yellow, green if you have those cheeks, so. That's separate code amendments, so the public hearing for code amendments. See, who's that, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just briefly cover the proceedings for tonight, so I'm going to really quickly touch on what the three amendments proposed are. You'll have an opportunity here with the applicant's testimony and then open it up for public testimony. At the close of public testimony, you will need to deliberate separately for each of these three amendments, and for each of them, you could choose to approve, deny, approve with revisions, or remand proposed revisions to the planning commission. And as I mentioned at our workshop, depending upon the outcome of your deliberations tonight, we may be bringing some ordinances back for a first read on November 20th, for I'll be scheduling hearings with the planning commission, depending upon, again, the outcome of this. So, we had three amendments this year. The first one had to do with bonding and assurance, and this was specific to fee simple residential properties, so basically homes and issuing of bonds to secure things like sidewalk improvements or driveway improvements or trees, those sorts of things, as a condition of issuing a temporary certificate of occupancy. You've seen it before. The only thing I would point out is that we're looking at amending both the development code and the River District SAP development regulations, because they each have this similar language. And the planning commission did recommend that this amendment be approved. And so, the second one, as you will recall, involves recreational vehicle storage in the RDM zone in the River District. And again, originally, it was proposed to just allow it as permitted and use subject to screening standards for storage that exist in the River District SAP. The planning commission did recommend that this not be approved, and the applicant proposed some ideas for how it might be amended as a conditional use permit. And at the last council workshop, we proposed some language for some additional landscaping requirements associated with that conditional use permit. The third one that you're going to speak to tonight has to do with eliminating minimum and maximum lot sizes in the R2 zone. This map shows all of the areas that it applies to, however, the only one that is not fully built out is actually in the Rocky Hill district. And basically, this is just showing where the changes are. The planning commission did recommend approval for this, and we did receive a letter from the Department of Commerce recommending that this be, that this constitutes a best management practice. So, with that, I think we're going to turn it over to the applicant to share his comments with you.
Mayor and council members, Kevin Snyder and all, I'm here representing the applicant, Greenstone, for the three privately proposed code amendments to both the municipal code of Liberty Lake and the River District SAP code. The objectives when we first came forward to the planning commission last spring was to provide clarity, efficiency and flexibility in both the municipal code and River District specific area code, where we thought there were some deficiencies and needed some changes to make both codes more efficient. These changes are reflective of our experience over many years of doing business in the City of Liberty Lake in both land development and home building. The first one, again, as the planning director stated, is related to the requirement to bond for improvements that might not be complete, such as sidewalk, driveways. This proposed language would require that no bond be required for fee simple residential units. We are also proposing that the city adopt a reinspection fee, so when they come out the first time to do their inspection and either determine they're going to issue or not issue a temporary CO, then when the, all the improvements were complete and we requested a reinspection fee, they would come out. And we certainly understand and concur that there will be some costs associated with that, and so, we certainly believe that it's very, very right to have a reinspection fee. As been stated in workshops that I've spoke to you previously about, this really, we believe, brings more efficiency both to the city and to home builders in Liberty Lake. There's quite a bit of tracking required on the bonds that are in place. Very often, these are small bonds, a few hundred dollars, and we don't think that this jeopardizes or puts the city in a bad position, because you still have the ability to not issue a final CO if the improvements haven't been completed and all the requirements met. So, we're requesting that this code amendment apply to both the City of Liberty Lake Municipal Code and the River District SAP, and we would request approval of that. The second one, again, is Article 10 dash 2C dash 7 lot area. Again, many jurisdictions now look at density rather than lot sizing as a factor in, when they're looking at approvals in different zones. In this case, this amendment would apply to the R2 zone in the City of Liberty Lake Municipal Code. There already is no minimum and maximum lot sizes in the River District SAP. In the past, when I spoke open front of the planning commission and you and as a council at workshops, I focused on smaller lot sizes. I want to give you an example of how it can be impactful and sometimes larger lot sizes are needed. So, in Rocky Hill, where we're starting to be built out, we're going to face an area that's adjacent to our neighbors to the north in the development, and just simply because of site constraints, we're likely in an R2 zone, going to need to look at doing maybe a half a dozen, maybe 10 or 12 larger lots, just because of the site constraints and slope and so forth. And certainly, a remedy to that is to do a zone change and ask for an R1 zoning designation. We think this is a better way to go, and we think, again, because there's still density requirements, we have to meet minimum and maximum density requirements, that there are safeguards in place that not impact the city in any way. So, we're also requesting that this amendment be approved. Again, it's only related to the Liberty Lake Municipal Code, or to allow it in the River District SAP. The third one is related to the zoning matrix, and we're proposing language to amend the River District SAP zoning matrix to include a conditional use for recreational vehicle storage only in the RDM zone. And the reason we, after discussions with you as a council and workshops and as we've went back and thought about it, it makes sense to not have it be outright allowed in the zoning matrix, but rather to have to be permitted through a conditional use application. in the zoning matrix, but rather to have to be permitted through a conditional use application. This gives the public another opportunity, when we would come forward with that application, to comment on size, location, screening, and so forth. And so we are very much in favor of that. As I've stated earlier, we do not have any proposed applications at this time. It's simply something, and as I've stated, associated with our Tretina 55-plus community, we've had interest. We don't know whether that interest will rise to a level where it'll make sense to do it. So we are also requesting that this code amendment be approved, and it applies only to the River District SAP, and within the SAP only, again, the RDM zone. We believe all the requested code amendments will have a positive impact on the city of Liberty Lake. We believe that they're consistent with the comprehensive plan, goals, and policies, and harmonious with established surrounding land uses. We don't believe it will adversely affect the environment within the city and surrounding neighborhoods. We request your approval of these code amendments, and appreciate all the time you've given to these subjects through multiple workshops and again tonight. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Kevin, on the RDM proposal, how many, at this point, how many homes and apartments in Tretina are occupied?
Are occupied? We've got about 73 apartments, townhomes, that are rentals. We've got approximately 72 homes that changes daily, so.
Yeah.
At build-out, we have proposed, the first phase of the multifamily is 93 total units. When we first brought this project forward, we looked at two phases of about equal size, so at build-out, we could have roughly 180 units of rental properties, and somewhere around 300 single-family detached, for sale.
Yeah, I'm just trying to concentrate on how many are occupied right now. So how many requests have you had for this?
We've had, the last time I checked, we've had 14 people interested. I don't know if request maybe is the right.
So less than 10% of the current?
Have shown interest in having the ability to store a vehicle on site.
Okay, so 9.7%.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Kevin, I have a question about, related to the conditional use. Because I understand that this would actually be a retail business in storing recreational vehicles in the residential district. Is that correct?
It would likely not be a retail business, no. We would likely operate it through the homeowners association in some fashion, so, as I've stated earlier, we would not, we would not look to have the ability to have people outside residents of the River District community have the ability to rent stories there. We may provide a few, two or three or four spaces for guests of residence on a short-term basis, so.
How might that impact subsequent use of the property 50 years from now, let's say? If you utilize it for RV storage, and 50 years from now, somebody says, "We don't want RVs here anymore," what could the possible uses be for the property?
Well, 50 years from now is a long, long time, Kevin, but I think because we're proposing simply outside storage, you're talking about a paved parking lot with the associated landscape improvements, so I think at some point, it could change. Again, we're proposing an RDM zone within River District, which allows multiple uses, including residential, so it could go back to a residential use. Be more likely be adjacent to that, or some type of commercial office use, because the RDM zone allows both.
Oh, thank you. Kevin, you probably recall in the past that my comments were, the only concern that I had is, this type of setup is something that we've personally been involved with, and it really can work out very well. The one part, though, where I have had a concern, is that it was going to be available to the residents and guests. And what you've just implied is, did you hear you correctly, that you're considering not allowing that, just for the residents?
No, I stated we would have, it's our belief that we would have some limited amount of spaces that would be reserved for guests of residence. So if a homeowner in River District or Tretina had friends come to visit, and they had an RV, and they were going to be there for an extended period of time, we would prefer, from a community neighborhood standpoint, that it's not parked on the street. And in the case of Tretina, they're private streets, but we still hold true to the same belief that that's not the proper place for them to be stored, so there would be some spaces. And, you know, we haven't determined that, whether it be a half a dozen or 10.
I can appreciate that. But is the wording still in there for residents and guests? Or is that guess that eliminated?
Well, we haven't eliminated it, and I know there's some proposed language in there that the planning director has proposed, and I'm not sure if it's really gone into that level of detail. Certainly, I believe that could be answered. Again, it's my understanding that when we come forward with a conditional use permit application, that's actually a public process, so there's going to be plenty of opportunity for input on those type of things. It would certainly be our plans at this time, if we were to bring forward an application, that it would include some given number of spaces for guests, certainly. And we're certainly open to that being a requirement, so.
Have you developed your planning far enough to visualize what kind of screening would be there?
Well, I didn't bring it in my slides. The planning director had it in hers. It's pretty, it would be a combination of both, some type of fencing, and the River District SAP only allows certain types of fencing. We don't believe that fencing should exceed six feet in height, so you're actually creating a wall. But we also, in the exhibits that we presented at the last workshop, showed very intensified landscaping as a combination of shrubs, evergreen trees, and deciduous trees. And also, within the parking lot, we would follow the current parking lot requirements of the River District SAP to have the proper amount of landscaping within the parking area itself. Council member Mike?
Yes, thank you, sir. Moving to another area of focus for you, your hearings would be lot size limitations. Can you tell the council what something like that would actually look like, as far as frontage and depths?
Well, so, again, we're proposing that there be no minimum and maximum lot size, okay? In most cases, just based on structure and housing, on detached situation, you're looking at a minimum of 35 feet of frontage, depth maybe down to 100 feet. Now, obviously, if you go to attached housing, then in the case of like a townhome product, you may get down to 20 feet of width, but again, that's in an attached situation. So, we have cottage product, which I've shared examples of in some of the workshops, and those are on 35 to 40-foot wide lots, and those happen to actually need 120-foot deep lot, which is a pretty standard lot, because they're a longer, they're a rancher-style home, and so they really, to provide a 20-foot driveway, those are alley-loaded products, so they're coming off an alley. But again, what's happened in the R2 zone, because we can't get down to that square footage on a lot, per the current code requirements, we, a few years ago, came up with a situation where we worked with the staff to figure out a way to attach them by a stem wall that was essentially underground, okay? We just tied the two foundations. You know, we don't think that's the best policy to try to figure out ways to accomplish something like that, so that's what we're proposing. And again, we've researched, and obviously, we do a lot of business in multiple jurisdictions, and most of them have gone away from minimum to maximum lot sizes, and just defer back to a density situation. In the case of, like Rocky Hill, where we're looking at the R2 zone that we have there, the, you know, the situation is, we still have to meet the minimum and can't exceed the maximum density requirements, so, you know, and the minimum is, can be, when you're doing single-family detach, you know, it's a little bit difficult to do sometimes, because on a net basis, so.
Thank you, sir.
Kevin, has a conditional use concept been presented to the planning commission? And if so, what was their reaction?
It has not, council member, that kind of through, through the workshop process, we'd already moved beyond the workshop process with the planning commission. That really kind of surfaced through the workshops here with the council, that maybe that was an option, and after we went back and further explored it, we're very comfortable with it, because, again, it provides both staff and the public an opportunity to comment on the application, so.
Lisa, two things. One, on the lot size, did you share the Department of Commerce letter here of September?
Yeah.
On the conditional use, maybe if you could just talk a little bit about that process? We passed this thing tonight, let's say, and the conditional use, did that trigger another hearing on the project period?
Yeah, so a conditional use permit actually requires a hearing before the hearing examiner. So it gives a case-by-case review of that particular project, and whether or not it meets the standards, and whether or not it's going to be compatible with the neighborhood. So I will say that, point number one, in response to some of your questions I heard. Number two, the language that is proposed for the conditional use and the standards, the standards associated with those uses, does not speak to whether or not the use would be limited to residents or their guests, because frankly, that's not a land use matter, and it's not, it's not an enforceable matter from a city code perspective. So there is no language related to who could use it.
Does that really test them?
It's not a land use. The land use is the recreational vehicle storage.
Do we have no say-so in that?
No.
That's what I'm suggesting to you, that that's not an appropriate regulation within a zoning code.
Don't remind me, and I think I asked this meeting or two ago, but I can't remember the answer, so for the conditional use, it goes in front of the hearing examiner. Are we bound to that decision, or can we say, "No, we don't agree"? Because I know we had a zoning rate change request several years ago. The hearing examiner supported, and we said, "No, we don't want to allow that."
So a zoning, a zone change request is a legislative matter. It's got some quasi-judicial components to it, but a conditional use is actually quasi-judicial. And under the code changes that you made back in 2017, the hearing examiner's decision is final, unless it's appealed, and if it's appealed, it's appealed to another, to the superior court.
So it goes to the hearing examiner, and that's it? We're bound to that decision?
That's correct. The last thing, that I heard a question about whether or not the planning commission had heard this or not, and they had not, because this really was a concept that arose from the workshops with city council. One of the options before you is the opportunity to remand it to planning commission for their recommendation, and they would have to have a hearing to consider that amendment, and then their recommendation would come back to you, and there would be another hearing. So that is absolutely an option.
Thank you.
Lisa, help me, so I wonder to make sure I understand this, but I brought up a concern about if it was just for guests and, for guests, if I bring up something that really has nothing to do with what we should be talking about?
So there's a couple of challenges. Number one is the enforceability, but the land use has to do with whether or not and how you provide storage for the recreational vehicles. It has little to do, nothing to do, with who's allowed to use that or not use it. Again, there might be a way to regulate that through business, some sort of business licensing or registration rules, but it really isn't an appropriate land use regulation.
So saying that it's for residents of Tretina and their guests, can say, we or they can say that all day long, but in the end, it can change. It could be public storage for money.
That's right. So I draw a parallel, that in the single-family residential zone, that your zoning code can't regulate whether those single-family residences are owner-occupied or rentals. At the end of the day, that doesn't change the form of the land use, and so that's, I'm making a similar argument as it relates to who uses the recreational vehicle storage.
I have a real struggle with that one.
I think, I think one of the ways that I finally got my head understood about this was that if you have a plot of land, we're voting whether or not they can put a closed store there, okay? You know, we can't regulate what they sell.
Exactly.
Okay, we can say, "Yeah, you can put the store there or not." But, same thing, Mike, is from what I'm hearing, is we're saying, put an RV lot there, or storage lot, or don't, but as far as who parks there, or how many, it's not us past saying.
You can put standards on how many, you can put standards on.
Allow me to finish. Other than, we could say, up to, limited numbers or whatever, okay? But as far as getting into the detail with them about who uses it? My DNA, Joe A. But not us.
Go ahead, Dan, I'm sorry.
Lisa, it looks like C1D states the capacity of the storage area should limit to 50 vehicles. Is that right?
That was, that was the language that was proposed. Again, you could change that, you could make it larger, you can make it smaller, but the applicant was comfortable with that number.
One of the things that was said by Mr. Sniden, and I just want to make sure I heard what I thought I heard, you said that it could be used, it started out as a Tretina use, and then during your further comments, I think I heard you say, "Or the River District area could also use it." Is that what you meant to say, or did I hear wrong, sir?
Sure, I can clarify. That's what I meant to say, and the reason for that, that if it's going to be managed and operated by the homeowners association, then likely we would not try to differentiate between. Again, as I've stated multiple times through the workshop process, most of the interest has come from Tretina, and that's where it would be located. Again, we're trying to do this not, again, as a retail-type business, we'll leave that to the experts. This is more as a service to the residents, and part of it also is to make sure that the community and the neighborhood maintains a certain look, because we could certainly allow an in Rivian, Tretina, for example, to date about 30% of our homes are alley homes. So we could say, you know, "If you want to park your RV in the alley behind your home, we're okay with that." we're okay with that. We don't, we don't think that provides the best look for the neighborhood or the community in general. But yes, we would likely have it so it'd be open to both River District and Tertina. Again, as I've stated, we're proposing it only in the RDM zone, which is the areas adjacent to both sides of Harvard. Those are the only RDM zones located in River District. So that, yeah, to be very clear, we would likely, we'll have it open to both River District and Tertina.
Yes, I have a question. Time does not seem to be of the essence of this matter, since you're really not sure what the demand is going to be. And it's something that the planning commission hasn't really reviewed or made a recommendation to city council concerning. Would you have a problem if we remanded this back to the planning commission for their review?
Before I could answer that, councilman, I'd want to, obviously, this process is almost a year-long process. We started about back in March and we're going to complete sometime here in November. I don't understand the process well enough. I know Lisa can answer that. But if it means that we start all over, you know, we may, you know, we may have some concerns about that, because to answer, you know, to kind of follow up on the question was asked over here, currently, the interest level is about seven or eight percent. But one of the things is we have not, we've not promoted it. In fact, no, those people come forward, we're very clear that currently it's not allowed. So we think that's had somewhat of an effect on the interest level. And certainly, as the community grows, I mean, if you do the math, if it's between 10 and 15% at the end of the day with the number of units that we plan to have there, you know, you're going to look at somewhere around 45 or 50, probably, talking now. And we're very comfortable with that kind of number. But again, we also will stand, I'll stand there and tell you that 7% doesn't, doesn't make it work. So we, you know, we need to get up in that 45 or 50 neighborhood so that we know there's enough interest there, because you're going to have people that fall off and you want to make sure you can sustain that. This very likely, again, will be a service-type thing where the fees are just so it can be sustained, maintained, and cover the administrative costs. That's really what we're working towards.
Where is it?
Okay, to answer the process question, to answer the process question, it would not have to go back to square one. It would go to the planning commission, we'd schedule a hearing, it would come back to you. Comprehensive plan amendments can only be done once per year, but there's no regulations on how many amendments you can bring forward. So that's not a problem at all.
Yes, based on that, we'd be very comfortable with your plan.
Or in fact, the planning commission itself can initiate the review.
I'm sorry?
I say the planning commission itself as a body can initiate the review. Or amendments to the comprehensive plan, or the development could.
They can do that as well. But it's an annual process, generally speaking, but as I said, the code amendments don't necessarily have to happen what wants to prove.
Yeah, just real quick, because I'm not going to reiterate all my issues with the, I know about the RVs. Forage, just, you know, the top of my mind is, A, what precludes that property from being sold at some point, turning into a public storage facility? And B, gosh, there's so many. We just, I just personally don't think it's a need or requirement related. We've had several people who have lived the RV life, who have, you know, kind of come in publicly or not testified that, you know, there are plenty of storage facilities within a very short distance of their homes here in Liberty Lake. And I just, I can't support this particular.
Can we have a, this is a public hearing, right?
The public testimony?
We'd like to get some public testimony. We've heard a lot from our council and opponent. So 8:20, we've opened up the public hearing on our code amendments, and we can either, I would like just to kind of take them by how they're laid out here in my packet. So the first amendment we were going to consider was regarding the bond requirements on these simple residential projects. That was where they're talking about changing the bond required for small housing and so forth. And then going to an inspection and owner-occupied permits issue and reinspection. So is there any public comment on that item?
Thank you, here, council. I spoke against this in the past, but if the bonds really are in the $200 range or something like that, then a change could be in favor of this code.
Sorry, can I get your name and address?
Sorry. James Alexander, emergency.
Any other public comment on that? I hear we're going to go to the next one. This is regarding RV storage in the River District, RDM zone. Is there any comment on that? I would like to make a comment.
Finally, room 2211 North Park. It's interesting that this is in front of the city council. I've worked and known Greenstone for many, many years, and I met with Jim way back a couple of years ago regarding this, because he said we'd like to expand the RV if your zoning allows it. And the answer was, no, the zoning does not, and we do not want RV. As most of you know, last year, when we did our phase three, Greenstone came in and raised that with the city and it was going to cause an issue. Yes?
I apologize for interrupting. Can you introduce the company you're representing, sir, so we can follow you?
Storage Solutions at 2211 North Park.
Thank you, sir. Storage Solutions.
We were grandfathered. We went to great hearings with both the legal and the planning commission. And we did extensive landscaping commitments to accommodate Greenstone. I find it really offensive that I'm standing here tonight with this issue in front of us, because it's, I see what I see here is an in-run. The fact that you're going to open this up for guests and other people in the resident area was Tertina only, that's one thing. But when you're opening it up to guests, which is, i.e., the public, like it or not, that's the public, you just approved an RV park so they can park their RVs over here right off of Appleway. If they need long-term RV, we have it. And we, we did that to accommodate the city of Liberty Lake. We went through great lengths over the last 14 years doing that. So, like I said, I find it really kind of challenging to see that it's kind of a rounding-in-run approach to RV zoning. And we were going, we were challenged very hard to even do our third phase. So I find it, it's not within the zoning code, there is not a zoning code for it. It's been put into a moratorium. And to me, that's where it should stay. I could go on several other things, but I can tell you that they open that up and they allow River District and guests, it's going to be just another situation that's not going to be suitable. And that's why we have zoning. Okay?
Thank you. Any other?
Hi, council. My name is Anita Eiler. I live at 166 North Coffield. I live in the River District. I am an advocate for Greenstone. I've lived, I own two of their homes. And I have to say that there seems to be a little confusion, and I just want to see if I'm correct in what that I heard. I heard that in this proposal, we are not guaranteeing who is going to be having their RV there. Is that correct? We can't say that it's guests, that it's RV. We can't say that it's somebody from the Spokane data. That's not what is at question here. So I want to make sure that that was clear. Also, the idea of having an RV park here is that Greenstone has been very good with their HOAs to really accommodate the communities that they have and to regulate what's going on in those communities for the better of the community. I truly, honestly believe that Greenstone would not even be proposing this if it wasn't something that meant something to their community. And I don't see how having it in the River District, which will be commanded by the HOA or their private streets, that they are going to have control over this. This is not a public venue. So I just wanted to add this comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? James?
James Alexander, again, thank you. Just in the past, I've spoken against opening up RV storage anywhere else in the city. If you do it here, then, you know, the code's in place and it's a precedent, and then somebody else wants it and so forth. The code currently says we don't want additional RV storage, additional to the ones we have either in the city or nearby, then there shouldn't be one in the city.
Thanks, James. Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm sorry, can I make one more comment?
Sure, please. We're very accommodating here.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Again, you don't want to. So I wanted to comment on that, because a conditional use permit is specific to the project. It's not open to everybody. That's what the purpose of a conditional use permit is. It guarantees what things are going to be said about that project itself, what condition we're going to be put on that project itself. It doesn't say that me, as a homeowner, can start an RV park in River District, that I would have to have a conditional use permit approved. And that's what they're trying to do here. That's what they're proposing they do, which helps regulate that much more. And I think that's the best I can do as a conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thanks for getting to here. Any further comments on that item? I hear any, eliminate the minimum and maximum lot sizes in the R2 zone. Any comments there? James?
We've got a couple of open seats up here.
Yes, I've talked about this one as well, concerns of, you know, minimum, how any individual lot could still meet the density requirements, but it could be tiny, tiny, tiny. And I think, okay, it may not affect the city and how it plans utilities and so forth, but it does affect the community if these sizes get too small. Also, if there's a neighborhood with sort of uniform lots, and then you decide you want to put a 10-acre ranch in one of them, also not conducive to the neighborhood being so. I'm against this one still. Thank you.
Any other comments on the minimum and maximum lot sizes? Not hearing any, it's 8:30, and the public hearing on this is closed. Are we taking action on this tonight or?
Can you ask her those questions?
Can I think about? I think what Lisa and I had discussed before, Lisa and I had discussed before, was getting guidance from the council with regard to each one, so that for the next meeting, we can bring forth either necessary ordinance or the appropriate framework for addressing each individual item. So Lisa, I don't know which way you want to go through it, but at least one by one on what the council wishes to do, to do.
Before we get too far there, if it pleases you, I would like to suggest to the council that we put this off, at least to the next meeting, where we have full council sitting here, so we can get everybody's input.
I agree with that.
If that works for you, sir.
If it works for me.
Thank you, sir.
So we're going to postpone the factual thing, so we'll put this top of our agenda on the 20th. I guess the question, and I would like council to answer this, is that in regards to kind of the direction, the bonding requirements, can you bring forward ordinance on the bonding requirements for the 20th?
I would support specifically the bonding requirements as proposed, and then the change.
Sir, yeah, I think we'll have to just repeat what I've already stated, that you're looking for guidance in an area that I would prefer to have everybody give input on. So by word-changing it and wordsmithing it, we're still not accomplishing the input of everybody else. So if it would be pleased you, I'd prefer to have everybody here.
Why waste staff time if none of these are ready?
We'd like to hear from all of us. If that doesn't bother you, thank you.
It's easy for me. All of you all watch elections.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we have the capital facilities plan, right?
So again, I'm going to be very quick. I gave you kind of a much larger overview at the workshop and just for the benefit of the public. Capital Facilities Plan is a six-year capital improvement program that addresses both capital projects and asset management projects. And the Capital Facilities Plan that was, that we've posted online, has the capital projects in blue, the asset management projects in pink. There's also a category of projects that are done by others that are potentially reimbursable through Tiff and Lyft, and those are in green. And so this is our program proposed for 2019 through 2024. This is something that the council looks at every year, and the out-years may get updated, that we may change the timing. It's intended to be a growth map for our capital investments. And really, the focus for the community and for council should be principally on 2019 and 2020, looking at the shorter term with an eye towards what building out for the longer term. And the last, and the train just derailed, so I guess I need to sit down.
Good move. We have a workshop scheduled on the Capital Facilities Plan, I think, on the 27th. So we've got some discussion on that. It's in our budget. So part of this, I think, tonight is basically the public hearing. So then we would like to hear the public's comments on our Capital Facilities Plan. Again, it's, are there copies there to be taken home on their table at all?
We could, I could probably make those happen.
If you'd like to, I guess the question is, it's a three, four-page miniature space thing. We've got lots of stuff on there. So if you'd like to make a comment now, we'd appreciate it. If you'd like to take it home, submit a written comment, we'd appreciate it, et cetera.
And it's also part of the budget as well. So if you want to download the budget, it's a component of the budget.
Mary, I'd just like to make one comment about the Capital Facilities Plan that I made. About 18 months ago, we started our strategic plan that we've developed now. And the Capital Facilities Plan is going to be an integral part of that. It's going to be integrated into the strategic plan for Liberty Lake. And, you know, thanks to the mayor and the city council and staff, you know, we're going to be a copy of something that the city of Spokane has. If they never integrate their Capital Facilities Plan into their strategic plan. So I'm very proud of everybody. I'd like to thank everybody for their participation and support.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing at 8:35. If there are any comments on this, we'll take them now. We'll also ensure that if you make a written comment, it's included in the record. With that said, it's closed at 8:36. And that brings us to Central Valley School District, Lisa.
My apologies. I know you're all getting tired of hearing me. So this is a hearing on the Central Valley School District annexation. And so the public hearing proceedings, again, I'm going to give you a very brief staff overview. I've presented on this topic a couple of times at council. You will hear from the applicant. Superintendent Ben Small is here today to represent Central Valley School District. And then we will take public testimony. My apologies, I know you're all getting tired of hearing me. So this is a hearing on the Central Valley School District annexation. And so the public hearing proceedings, again, I'm going to give you a very brief staff overview. I've presented on this topic a couple times at council. You will hear from the applicant. Superintendent Ben Small is here today to represent Central Valley School District, and then we will take public testimony. As I mentioned to you earlier, and for the, in the, for the public's perspective, we will have a second hearing on this matter, and that is scheduled for December 18th. And so with that, just a brief overview, this is a subject property. It's located on the western border of the city. It is south of Country Vista, it's south of Country Vista Drive. It is to the west of North Henry Road. It is to the north of East Sprague Avenue. And it is to the east of Hodges Road, which is over actually the first street in the city of the valley. I wanted to share with you some procedural information. We did receive the letter of intent to annex on September 14th, and city council did authorize this school district to proceed with petition on the 18th. The school district submitted their petition to annex the city on September 24th, and we issued a notice of intent to adopt to the Washington Department of Commerce on September 27th. And that's important because they have a 60-day comment period. The notice of application hearings and site posting we happened on were about October 24th, and we issued the DNS threshold determination on the SEPA, so determination of nonsignificance on the annexation and zone change, which is a non-project action. If annexed, the school district will still have to do a full environmental impact statement on actually developing the project, so that's an important note. So that was issued today. The close of the appeal period is, the SEPA appeal period is November 19th, and we have our first hearing tonight. The second hearing will be on the 18th, and the 18th of December. And the earliest possible effective date for annexation, should you choose to move forward, would be February 21st. And that is because we are...
2019 versus...
Oh, 2019, excuse me, yes, I'm sorry. Good catch.
We're stepping this ahead quickly.
Yes, because we are required to, we have a 60-day notice requirement to the county as it relates to, as it relates to the annexation before it can take effect, yes.
Question, let me see, if we were to suspend the rules tonight and move to a second hearing, would that offer any benefit to the earliest possible effective date?
It would not, and it would not because you cannot. In order to do the comprehensive plan designation and zoning simultaneous with the annexation, it requires two hearings that are at least 30 days apart.
Thanks.
Lisa, I do have one question, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Can any construction take place?
So could construction take place?
During this time period?
Prior to the annexation? Yes, but only if it's permitted in the county.
By whom?
I'm sorry?
By whom?
By, if there was a permit issued in Spokane County, by Spokane County, construction could occur before the annexation. If the city was to issue building permits, we would have to wait until the annexation had taken effect.
That's correct.
Not just that you had approved it.
Right.
One of the things we have committed to in order to expedite the project, however, is that we're willing to do pre-development with the school district, even as you're contemplating the annexation. If you make a decision to move forward with this annexation on December 18th, we would accept building permits for review and processing, but we still couldn't actually issue the permits until the annexation took effect. But we could certainly do the review, and with a project the size of the high school, it is going to take some time to get the, to process the building permit.
So there won't be any significant issues with the people that want to move this forward about starting to build and having it be within specs for the city?
I'm going to suggest that you ask that question of the superintendent.
I will, thank you.
Well, she'll bring Ben Small up now.
Yes. Exactly. One last thing I want to, I want to point out to you, and this is important, so the comprehensive plan does provide your governance as it relates to annexation, and a specific evaluation criteria that you should be considering as you, as part of your annexation proceedings. One is the ability to provide public service at the city's adopted levels of service. Two is whether annexation would eliminate an unincorporated island or would, or could be expanded to eliminate an unincorporated island, that does not really apply. Whether the annexation would follow logical boundaries such as streets, waterways, parcels, sections, or substantial topographic features. Whether the annexation would eliminate an irregularity or irregularities in the city's boundaries to improve service delivery and its consistency with the goals and policies of this comprehensive plan. So those are, when you get to the part where you get to actually deliberate about this, those are the things you should be thinking about. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Small.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Small.
Good evening. Mayor Peterson, council members, staff, Ben Small, City Council, very pleased to be here before you tonight. As you are most likely aware, the school board of directors selected a new site for our third comprehensive high school in the Central Valley School District. That site is between Country Vista and Sprague Avenue, and is described by director, funding director, Mr. Beattie Bill. We selected this site for some very specific reasons. First of all, was to ensure fiscal stewardship of our taxpayer dollars. This site, in our estimation, saves us at a minimum of $5.6 million of taxpayer money versus building on the 16th and Henry Site. And that's not just us coming up with this. We worked over a lengthy period of time with our architects, our engineers, civil engineers. We've worked with the city, the county staff on traffic improvements that would have to be made in order to make the 16th and Henry Site work. And it was our determination that it was best to look at this site as an alternative. And ultimately, our board adopted and designated this site as our high school site. We believe that this site is the only site that we currently have that allows us to keep our promise to open a new high school in 2021. When we went to our voters, of course, we made, we talked to our voters about having the site at 16th and Henry. In fact, we'd owned that site since 19, I think, 1978, so 37,7 years that we'd owned that site. And so it's not easy for us to just walk away from the 16th and Henry Site, especially when we've talked to our voters about it. But when we look at that site, we evaluate that there's no way that we would begin construction at that site in a timely fashion, and believe that the project would be delayed probably until 2022 and even until 2023, depending on issues with the urban growth area boundary that still have not been resolved through media to settle with the county. At the same time, we believe this site is better. We believe this site offers visibility to our school and better access off established roads. It also provides us, the school district would own, will own, we do own, not will, we will and do own 142 acres in this area. It allows us the flexibility to build a school that would be able to be flexed with and added on with enrollment growth, and also gives us the field space to move, whereas the 16th and Henry Site would not have. As we move forward in the process of selecting and purchasing this site, we stated our desire, and even at my recommendation to our board to buy the site, and our recommendation to the board to select that site and designate it as a high school site, I recommended annexation into the city of Liberty Lake at the beginning of these things. And we did that for several reasons. Annexation to us allows us to stay on schedule. We do have to change the zone of this property, and that zoning is light industrial in the county, Spokane County, and is not at this point in time, and the current state does not allow a high school use on that site, would allow a vocational use on that site. So when we purchased the property, we knew right away that we wanted to be working with the city of Liberty Lake and moving forward with this. And it was part of the plan for us to be requesting this of you. Our timeline would be this. I talk about staying on schedule, and this is what we need to have happen in order to stay on schedule. We would call for us to begin construction with a site package, which means building the, bringing utilities to the site and building and establishing the building pad. So what you're doing is creating the foundation, which you're going to put the foundation. We would like to start that as soon as, basically, we could, after annexation was completed in February. So we would begin that process in March of 2019. So bringing utilities, building that site pad, and then would go to bid and would be, begin construction, sign construction documents in July of 2019, if the annexation were to move forward with this process. It's an aggressive timeline, and people, a high school building is complex, it's 240,000 square feet. It will be a full comprehensive high school that will provide an educational opportunity that is on par with our other comprehensive high schools in our district, theaters, gymnasiums, football field and stadium. So a full comprehensive high school, and to do that, it takes time. And our contractors, 24 months to us is really 20 months to us, it's, they like 24, we are really pushing to have this done sooner than that, but we want to be ready to accept students, freshmen through juniors in the fall of 2021. We're being aggressive with this because of a couple of things. We have overcrowding in our high schools, and it's impacting the learning environment for our high school students. And there's no reason to hold back. There's no reason to delay this opening of our third comprehensive high school. Why annex into the city of Liberty Lake proximity? This high school site shares the border with the city of Liberty Lake, and in fact, part of the high school site is already in the city of Liberty Lake. And so it just makes sense for us, as we look at the total 142 acres at this point in time, to look at annexation into the city of Liberty Lake. One, we have built two schools, well, three, but one was built before your city, and now River, Liberty Creek, and then South Kirk Mill School. And so we know how to work with one another. We don't know how to work with the county yet, well, we do, but we haven't worked with the county on building a school. And so we believe that our best way to get this done is to work with the folks that we're familiar with working with. Being held accountable to your code, being held accountable to the things that the city of Liberty Lake values, and being able to work through those issues in a timely manner is really important to us. And we believe that we have that relationship with the city of Liberty Lake, and we want to continue to work with you in delivering this school to our community. So the fact that we're on the border, the fact that as the design and the site layout is, and I've got a copy of the site layout that I would like to distribute, just so that you have it, I don't have it on a site, but I just give it to staff. So as you can see, we have tennis courts, which probably will be converted location into a practice soccer field. We have two softball fields that are, we're working with Centennial Properties on, and we acquired that piece of property that are already in the city of Liberty Lake. And we believe that it's best for us to move forward in this fashion. Cost savings. Our site layout takes advantage of the robust infrastructure, transportation infrastructure with Country Vista Road. We want to take advantage of Country Vista Road selfishly because we, as a school district, are not in the road building business. We certainly can and would if we had to. So to take advantage of Country Vista, Country Vista's in the city of Liberty Lake. And if we're going to use that road, we should be permitting with you. We should be working with you because we're utilizing your infrastructure, and that makes the most sense to us, and we hope that makes sense to you as well. We're going to use your infrastructure, then permit fees, sales tax, those types of things should be going to your city in order to make this work. The other thing is utilities that are available within Country Vista, and it gives us this opportunity to hook right up to those utilities. Again, when I, when we look at this, part of how we acquired it and when we acquired the gun club property is the gun club is going to operate for, continue to operate for another three years. So that puts a real interesting dynamic. So one might say, well, why not annex into the city of Spokane Valley? There is no zoning possibility for a gun club in either the city of Liberty Lake or the city of Spokane Valley. So we can't annex that. We can't, we couldn't take this to the city of Spokane Valley because there's a gun club between us and them, and we don't think that's the best thing. We haven't asked to have the gun club annexed into the city of Liberty Lake because we've researched the code and we can't find a place in your code which allows a gun club. And we have a commitment to the gun club to continue to operate. And it's our commitment to the gun club that, that we do facilitate them continuing to operate and continuing to move forward. So those are the reasons. And then what, what I would say is just to continue partnership and working relationship with the city of Liberty Lake, as we have worked to provide the best education we can for our students. I know that there's no action tonight, we will take other public comments, but one of the things that is important for us too is that through our legal counsel, it is our determination that we can't have, we can't ask to annex, as a school district, we can't ask to annex property that is not ours into another jurisdiction. And that's been established in court cases, a Brenton Public Schools court case that limited the school district's ability. So I know one of the things that's on the list here is irregularities. This is the shape of the property that we own and where the high school will be, and so we've tried to do that the best we can without going to other people and saying, we need to annex your property in the city of Liberty Lake. That stands for any questions you might have.
I got one question. You mentioned, you have a cross-explant at Centennial. Where is their property, let alone...
Their property is right to the north here, and we are working with them to get the easements. So we've been working with Centennial Properties, have agreements on easements in order to have access to property, and also have a purchase, really a purchase agreement for the little triangle where the two softball fields would be located, so that we would acquire that property as well.
My question, what do you anticipate in the future of utilizing? You consider this property here, will we utilize for...
Well, if we utilize, consistent with the zoning, which is P, public, and so either it's going to be another school for us, or we need another expansion, and I can move forward.
So the present timeline doesn't hinder you either, then?
At this point in time, no. And the thing that has been nice is, I think the county has actually stepped up in cities. If we need to give some of our permitting authority for roads and those types of things over to the city of Liberty Lake, they're willing to do that in order to make this work, because they understand. And to be clear, we have been very clear with all of our jurisdictions what our intent is with this area. This is not a surprise to our county commissioners. This is not a surprise to the city of Spokane Valley. I hope it's not a surprise to you.
It was, it was.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. This is a public hearing on the annexation, and so at 9:00, 8:55, the public hearing is open. Any comments?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, James Alexander. First, the question, do I understand that the gun club is going to continue to operate or continue only for three years? Are you going to have the gun club next to the high school?
No, it's eliminated when the high school opens.
Say again?
It's eliminated when the high school opens.
That's what I thought. The public news was that you'd been quiet... The public news was that you've acquired that line, and you'll do a lead for termination. Okay, all right, thanks. So the three concerns I have, first, I'm in favor of annexing the property for the school, and welcome the school to the city. Three concerns I have, one is that we monitor somehow the lead removal. We don't want to have lead reaching into our sewer system and have to deal with that, or into the aquifer, so it's one, two. But the, we consider very carefully the transportation plan, where we're looking at impacted that entire area, specifically have a place for the buses to pull off of Country Vista when they go to the school, so that we're not stopping traffic all of the time, that it's more safe for our students to go there. And third, that this would likely require, according to the chief, having an officer full-time on site, and that somehow that gets funded, hopefully by the ease from the school district. Thank you.
Other comments? As a citizen of Liberty Lake, I want to express my, I wouldn't say delight, it's a pleasure to have Central Valley School District petition us for annexation from this aspect. I found them to be great partners, I found them to be great stewards of the public's money, especially in building projects. And as we grow up, I'm, I'm looking at a city that has now a K through two, a three through five, a middle school and a high school within, by 2021 or so. And so, on behalf of myself and my neighbors, we sure look forward to having this school developed sooner rather than later, and on behalf of the city, I think as mayor, I think Ben and his crew are just wonderful people to work with. Any other comments? I'm not hearing any over the public, hearing is closed at 8:58, and we're at Resolution 18-246.
Resolution number 18-246, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, regarding finalization of the Rocky Hill North Fourth Edition Plaid located in a portion of the southeast quarter in Section 11, Township 25 North, Range 45 EWM, Liberty Lake, Washington, File P-11-001D.
So, this, oh, Rocky Hill North Fourth Edition, excuse me. So Rocky Hill North, this is a Rocky Hill North preliminary plaid that was approved in 2011, and it encompassed almost 68 acres, 327 lots, 12 tracts, and public streets. So this is Rocky Hill North Fourth Edition, the addition that you're being asked to finalize tonight. It's 8.51 acres, 39 parcels, it has public streets, specifically Greenstone Rock. And the applicant has met all of the conditions of approval for this development. We do have bonds on file, performance you want to bonds for remaining work, and the plaid is ready to go upon your approval. I just wanted to give you a context for this also, as we, as we saw when we closed out River District North, or River Crossing North, as with most of the these developments, the addition, when we look at all of the additions that have been done to date, we have remaining 149 lots on 22.52 acres, so that's based upon the original preliminary approval. That's 6.61 units per acre, and it doesn't allow for- My point in doing the analysis here is to, was to demonstrate that Greenstone has actually done, developed this at a lower density than what had been approved, and that the balance of it could not possibly be, be applied for the remaining lots. So I, I think that they, they have done a really good job. Again, they're pretty close to, to build out, they've probably got about two more, two more phases to go, based upon the, the acres that they generally phase with. They are going to build out on this, and as I said, they really have, have actually done a lower density than was actually originally proposed. So, that's what I have, I stand for any questions that you might have, yes.
Any idea of the, the remaining, they'll allow 149 lots, but that's, that's anticipated?
Well, so, so this is, so I would say that, and that would maybe be a better question for Kevin, but they do about a, a phase a year, so, but they're not going to get 149 lots. My point is that it's going to be something less than that.
Right.
That's not, that, that they won't get the full, they will not realize the full density of what-
About what, what age, something like that?
Yeah.
Of course, just curious.
Yeah. So, yeah, I would say within the next couple of years.
Two years, three years?
Yeah, more than likely, a maximum of three phases, more than likely, probably two phases. And as you can see, the phases have been six to 10 acres, so, and we've been doing about one phase a year, so.
Great. Question, Lisa?
Yes, sir.
Just as a matter of process, the resolution that I have before me on my screen, okay, is, this is the verbiage, "finalization of Rocky Hill North Fourth Additional Final Plaid."
That's correct.
Can you break that down to English? I got a lot of finals going on.
So, this is, the process is that the preliminary plaid goes through the hearing examiner process, and actually, in this particular case, city council had the final decision on it, there were conditions of approval. Once you have a preliminary plaid approved, the applicant then has to submit civil drawings for the infrastructure that's required, and provide a final plaid. The process that Greenstone has, follows here within the city, is that they plaid chunks at a time, that basically they try, they only plaid as much as what they intend to develop over the course of the next year. And it's actually a very wise practice, because market demand changes over time, and they have the latitude to flex what they actually build out, and what density, et cetera.
So what we're saying is that we're wrapping up the Fourth Edition?
So, so that's what, so this is the final plaid, this is, you're accepting the infrastructure, and you're accepting the, and once the final plaid is recorded, they can go forth and build homes.
Very good.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to, I guess I didn't understand the question.
No, you're doing fine, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
So, Resolution, we moved in second?
We haven't moved in second, no.
I move Resolution number 18-246.
Second, we got all kinds of-
Which one is it?
Further discussion on the current resolution, I don't think we do that. So, for that said, now further discussion, Hall in favor of Resolution 18-246, raise your hand. I count five out of five, go ahead. That's adopted. First read ordinance.
Ordinance number 251, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, granting the right of franchise to Surrogan Networks LLC for the operation of a telecommunications system in the city of Liberty Lake.
What is 252?
And, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 252. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting the 2019 to 2024 Capital Facilities Plan.
And ordinance number 253.
City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 253. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, levying the regular property taxes for the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, in Spokane County for the year commencing January 1st, 2019, to provide revenue for the provision of the city services as set forth in the city budget.
Okay, I'll come in and- So we, we're going to confirm, but Senator Penn should be here during the committee workshop. We'll have four public hearings related to the 2019 budget, the capital facilities plan, and the Central Valley School District annexation request, plus another public hearing related to the property over in the, in the Rocky Hill Park that has the tract of land that we've been trying to convert with RCO with the portion over at Orchard Park. So that was, that's an additional public hearing. Then we have a resolution with Trottina, second additional final plaid. Second, read ordinances, and then direction, we'll bring back, looking for counsel when they're fully meeting for direction regarding the code amendment.
Lisa, did you put this in the public record for the hearing?
I did, yes. So that is, that is the comment that we, that is the first comment that we received, the first and only comment that we see on the annexation. May I also just point out that the annexation hearing will not be on the 20th, it will be December 18th.
Final citizen comments?
Here, I'll be one.
Okay.
Let the council know Country Vista was paid today, so they can actually, this and afterwards.
Very good. Great, okay, thank you, Kevin. Great job. Good.